In this.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Legions. First item on the agenda in public comments. Somebody would like to speak? Your name and address?
Chris Mahoney, Chief of Fire Firm, lifelong, lifelong Bethel resident. So I'd like to talk a little bit tonight about the fire commissioning that's really not a fire commission. It's really a right now an ad hoc committee. And just let all you guys know that it's kind of like all over the place. Chief Baker and I were kind of confused about what actually is what. So that's going to be something for you guys to sort out and decide whether it's going to be a commission or it's going to be an ad hoc committee that the Board of Selectmen has the right to appoint and need. The other thing is anything they've still done with the fire department or the commission would appreciate if we're asked. We'll certainly hear any comment that you want. We'll comment on anything you want. And if we can make any suggestions back to something you ask us, that would be great and and we will certainly be able to explain to you why we're making that suggestion. So we just figured, you know, both Chief Baker and I figured we'd come here tonight just to lay it out for you and then we were gonna excuse ourselves and let you folks do your work. You've got a lot of work ahead of you.
And not much time.
No. No, you don't. Thank you.
Okay, yes, and you're free to go anytime you want or stay the whole time. All right, so.
My name is John Baker, A East Lane is my address. I just wanted to also reiterate what Chuck McCollum said that we're looking for some more clear policies to what the fire commission is actually supposed to be doing. And one of the suggestions that I had made was there's also an EMS commission. And the fire department encompasses both the fire department and EMS. Can we have one governing body of a commission to speak on both of those as one? Because it's the same chiefs that are running that, those agencies as well. And then it's one less meeting that we would have to attend, right? It would be one, one body, one meeting, and one affects the other on making decisions. But just a clear, whether it's policies over and above just talking about what needs to be purchased and budgeting, that's just a small drop in what potential can be for the commission. Like Chief says, if you have any questions or concerns or certainly going to help. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Chair, I have a question.
Oh, you want to ask questions?
I just want to point a clarification. What has the commission done so far administratively? What has been their path? Because I also have a question of what their purpose is. Maybe you can explain what you know that the commission, what had been their charge thus far?
Mostly what it is, is to review budget proposals, whether it's the operating budget or the capital budget. Look at expenditures, whether it's needs throughout the year, emergency funding, or it's lately, it's been looking at how you're trending spending the current fiscal year budget. Now it's looking at what you have for inventory and whether or not the replacement of that said inventory should be on the operating budget or the capital budget. So it, that's what it is, is basically just a financial.
Nothing to do with training, discipline, recruitment, daily operation. So it, it's, it's a mechanism to control finance to the other entities in town, be it Board of Finance, et cetera, so it's specific to finance?
That's what the majority of what has transpired since its existence.
Okay. When it was, when it was formed, that was our understanding was it was financial. It's morphed into some other things. Like I said, I'm not really sure where it's going. So I think it's going to be for you folks to figure out what exactly it should be and whether it should be a commission or as I said, an ad hoc committee.
EMS is under, would be under this then administratively?
If, if, if you form one, say, commission for EMS and fire for both departments, then it would all be combined as Chief Baker stated.
Where is EMS in this now?
EMS right now is, is separate. We have, as Chief Baker explained, we have a separate meeting. First selectman's involved in that meeting. It's an EMS commission meeting, there are EMS commission meetings.
So EMS has a commission as it stands?
Correct.
And the fire, we're, we're talking about a fire commission, but you want to combine them with that?
Correct, be more like a public safety commission and excluding police because we have the responsibility of fire and EMS. And they can have their commission for the.
Is that problematic for EMS at all?
No, our, our responsibilities with both kind of mesh together a lot. So I, I think it would work.
Correct.
I just wouldn't want to jointly cause a rift rather than.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, we're all in the same building. Bethel, Bethel EMS, Bethel Fire in the same building. Yeah, we, the fire departments run EMS side of the departments.
So you would take on their budget as a result of this?
Well, no, they don't have, the, the town does not offer us a budget. It's completely funded by the department. But because there is a commission for EMS, which they're looking to consolidate the two departments. So there is topics on the fire commission that could be in a public safety.
But structural, I don't mean necessarily that the actual funding would come from the town, but structurally you would be responsible then for preparing all of their funding issues? If you combine that, those two commissions, yes?
Well, the two departments are responsible for that right now.
Correct, but if it's one department.
And Stonehill, Fire Department Incorporated. They do all the ambulance billing, like the town of Bethel doesn't do the ambulance billing.
That I do.
All the ambulance billing, including the ALS service, paramedic service, is billed by both departments. And then there's a check that comes back to the town of Bethel for the ALS service from both departments.
I, I just wondered if it would create a bookkeeping nightmare or is it one or leave it? You know, that's.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I really don't.
I can just follow up one more time. How was your finances proposed to the town fathers in prior to this commission? Or committee?
It was just one last layer to go through prior to that, was to talk to the Board of Selectmen and then go to the Board of Finance.
So collectively, your agencies would present your budget? And was now, it appears specifically, based upon what you're saying, it's not management or any of those other things I mentioned, it's specific to finance?
It's another layer.
And to your knowledge, there's no written charge of what this commission's authority is, or isn't?
It's an advisory commission.
There's, there's stuff on paper, but the problem is to me, it's not clearly defined and it leaves a lot of things open for interpretation. So as I said, I think, I think you folks are going to have to weed through it all and decide what you think should be.
First of all, thank you. EMS in Bethel. Awesome. So currently, your purview is financial. Okay. Just out of curiosity, so who is, who is involved in employee, employment, hiring, firing, and just like that? Who does that?
Well, on the EMS side, that's totally different than, than the fire department side. Fire department side, people apply for membership. There's a membership director. They're all vetted and then they have to come before the board of directors and interview committee. And then they come before the company to be accepted as a probationary member. They have to meet all the requirements throughout probation to then be made a regular. I believe, now that's Bethel Fire, I believe, Stonehill mirrors what we do. It's basically the same thing. On the EMS side, it's the same thing for the volunteers, but then there's also paid day plan crew. And the hiring, the hiring and releasing of those is through the company that we use to staff the events.
Okay.
They're supplying the people.
Okay, do you ever anticipate any professional fire department in Bethel?
Look, you could do it tomorrow, but you're looking at five to seven million dollars.
Yep.
I, to me, I think as long as we keep the recruitment up, we have the right equipment. I think we're okay.
I think that that could be one of the goals and objectives of the fire commission or public safety commission is to work on volunteerism, recruitment, retention, to do everything that is feasible possible to keep volunteering alive in, in the town of Bethel. Because obviously, the alternative is very expensive.
You know, that's all, all those sites you see around the town, both Bethel and Stonehill, that's all by the corporations. There's no tax allowances for any of that. That's our money, Stonehill's money, doing that to try and get more people. Which we've been pretty successful doing. There's another class going on right now, another fire one class going on right now. With, I think there's eight, eight approximately from Bethel and Stonehill in that class.
Thank you.
Oh, I mean, staffing is difficult, certainly during the day more than usual, but and it's a problem for both fire and EMS. So we're always looking for members, we're always looking for that retention. One of the things that needs to be looked at by the, the commission is what kind of incentive programs can we offer? We're finding that it's getting more and more difficult to find people that want to give away their time 100%. I hate to say it, but it's kind of what's in it for me. And we're seeing it a lot in surrounding towns where they are offering more than just a tax payment to get people to dedicate their time. So that's, again, one of the things that I think can be expanded into the commission's roles and responsibilities over than just looking over, you know, financials.
Right.
I do have to say kudos to Dan because Dan's been working on that hard with us. He's looking at all avenues to, to help us with that and we do appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We're going to excuse ourselves and let you people do your work. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us speak.
All right. We had circulated, or Mary had circulated a draft agenda and so I wanted to see if the commission is of mind to adopt the agenda. Anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we adopted the agenda.
Second.
Any comments? Questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you. So correspondence, Mary, do you want to review what we have there?
There's emails from Drs. The Chamber of to the first selectmen and to the town council. That's labels A1. And then A2, 3, and 4, or correspondence that Sonya given me that were previously submitted to the mission of 2018.
Okay, and then, so we all have those and we'll be reviewing those later on in our deliberations. And then the FOI policy, meeting policy, Mary, do you want to read that policy or everyone has a copy of this?
Yeah.
Has everyone read them?
Yeah.
Understand them? All right, any questions or comments on it? Okay, so moving on to approval of minutes, consideration of approval of the special meeting minutes from July 16th, 2024. Are there motion?
So move.
Is a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, consideration of approval of the minutes from public hearing held on 8/14/2024. So we have motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or?
I have a question. That was recorded, right, the public hearing was recorded. How would the general public access those recordings? What form are they in?
It's on our, the town website.
On the website, okay.
And if they were just to go to that meeting, click on that meeting to be agenda, the minutes and the recording will be there.
Thank you.
And, and that recording stays on the website for how long?
I don't know exactly how long it stays on for, I'd find out, but it's a substantial amount of time.
And I should follow up. How does the town, how do the town people know to do that? To go into YouTube or to go onto the website? How, how do people find this out?
Anytime I want to, I just go to the town website and see meetings and agendas.
Everything is there.
Everything is there.
Yes, and the vast majority, I wouldn't say vast, don't understand that all of that information is there. And quite frankly, absolutely no, and self intended, the website's really hard to use. And it's really, it's, it's tricky. So I'm wondering if there are ways of streamlining, making, getting access to these things more efficient? Because one of the things that I notice is that with public comments, all you have are the names of the people. And I understand that, you know, Mary, I assume when you were taking minutes, like you're not, you know, a court reporter, you can't get every word. And that can be a problem when you're talking about illegal document, I understand. But there has to be a way for the town people to know and be able to access it relatively easily. And certainly to know, to look.
I think that in general, people know everything is on the website. It's not always easy to find, the search feature works sometimes. But I, I wanted to mention that Newtown has a really nice feature. You can subscribe, you can subscribe to agendas, you can subscribe to notices, you can subscribe to minutes. So if you're interested in a particular commission or something, you just, you subscribe to it. So if, if you're interested in Board of Finance, just subscribe to those. If you're interested in this, you subscribe to it. Once people know that feature exists and they can go into the, assuming we can get that kind of software. But once people know that that's possible, they can go in and subscribe to whatever they want and they get, they get a link in email every time something happens. I think that would be a really great way to keep people informed. Dan, if you could look into that, maybe, I don't know how much that software costs or.
Our, our software may do it. Because we, we've just revamped all the website. But I would also say, Mr. Chairman, what I would do is I, I will be sending this out, everything going on with the Charter of Vision is extremely important, I've been trying to let people know it's happening. Public hearings are happening. I will continue to put things out about what this committee's doing over the next, you know, 10 months, 16 months, whatever it is, in the Friday update with links. With links to the agenda.
Maybe even just a general comment that, hey, all this stuff is available on the website. This is where you go if you want to find out.
Yeah, but what, what we usually try to do on the Friday updates, direct people back to the website, like drag them back to the hearing links, because all these hearings are in one spot. Or if we talked about a particular commission, my public, you know, our P and Z, I try to take them to the P and Z is agenda section, kind of train people where to look for it if we get it booked. But I think the subscription thing's a great idea and I can certainly look into that. Our software may do it, a number of times too. Yeah.
Because you only have to find it once, don't have to every month, try to remember, how do I get back to that again?
And can I just follow up, this has to do with conflict on the correspondence. What happens for us to the correspondence that we receive as well as the public comments? What do we do with all of that? And please, I've been my first, go around here, so if I should know, forgive me.
So if you take a look at the agenda, what we will be doing from this point on is we're going to methodically go through the Charter of Vision, starting with the proposals from the 2018, 2019 that were approved by the Charter of Vision Commission and approved by the Board of Selectmen, but never went to the voters. And, and that commission worked for a year and a half and their work just went to the side. So we, we'll take a look at theirs first. Then after doing that, and we'll just go through tonight, page by page. Maybe we'll finish tonight, maybe we won't. But, and then we will go on to the Board of Selectmen 2024 proposals. Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think part of what you're looking for is where you find the information now? Like from these meetings, if you ever, okay, so I just want to try and understand.
What, what, how does, how does the Charter Review Commission respond to the correspondence?
That's the next agenda. Yeah, okay. So then the next agenda item is consideration of any other proposals submitted to the Charter of Vision Commission, whether at a public hearing, whether orally at one of our meetings or in writing submitted to us. And so, and then also by doing that last, it will also give more time for the public to come forward for proposals. Mr. Chairman, I might point out just real quickly too. We, we were speaking a minute ago and I think you were talking about approving the minutes from the public hearing. And I don't think you ever voted on that because I was going to make one correction.
No, we're, we're still in discussion about it.
So make sure, I'll have one correction.
Ready?
Okay, I was, I was in attendance at the public hearing online, remote, as expected. So I'm not, I'm not on here.
Sorry.
No worries.
Okay. Any other, and, yeah, so any other comments, if not all in favor of the minutes from the public hearing? opposed or abstained? Okay, so if you could kind of go through your, Nick had generated for us, sent all of us the file for the previous commission's work. So it's the entire charter with crossouts and, and new language. And if you can just go through those one by one and hopefully we'll get some, get some headway into all of these. So the first one that I see, if I skip any, just let me know. First one I see is in C2-5. And it's to add.
Did you get a copy of the Charter of Vision, please? The next, the last meeting, I think.
Well, it was, it was before.
No.
I don't know if it was handed out, I think it was emailed.
It was emailed, yeah, I have a hard copy of the charter, just to send out the red line, if you'd like that.
But it's not the red lines or not? Okay, that's fine. I, I've read this, you know, the one. I've read it through pretty thoroughly, so I should be able to participate properly.
Okay, everyone else said?
I don't have it, but I, that's okay, I'll follow along.
Okay, so right after, I think immediately after our first meeting, Nick emailed that out.
Yeah, I probably didn't.
So if you go to C2-5. Yeah, these are still.
That's nineteen.
Okay, eligibility for office. They add at the end of. Pardon me. In paragraph B, they say, in addition, well, let me, let me lead into what. So this paragraph says that no employee may serve on any town agency, board, or commission if such agency, board, or commission exercises direct supervision or has a responsibility or direct supervision over the employee, nor may any town employee serve on the Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning Board of Appeals, Inland Wetlands Commission, except as an ex officio member as a result of membership on the Board of Selectmen. Okay, so, and then they add to this, is in addition, members of the Board of Finance shall not concurrently serve on an elected or appointed municipal board or commission during their time in office. So this expands that paragraph to say that the Board of Finance members cannot serve on any other elected or appointed board.
And the other notes added Board of Assessment appeals to this.
And that's, and that's our next iteration when we go through the Board of Selectmen.
Fine.
Yeah.
And you don't want to do that together.
I.
I mean, I don't want to confuse, it just seems simple.
Because we'll be, we'll be jumping back and forth. And I, and I do have a question about that, whether that's part of the law, but the issue here was this paragraph was added after some years ago when.
He just wanted to do the red.
Yeah, I, I don't have a color printer in home, so I just, mine's all black.
In addition, members of the Board of Finance shall not concurrently serve on an elected or appointed municipal board or commission during their time.
And, and also.
That's what we're talking about.
And as we go through this, we'll rely on John Lennon and Nick Viti. John was on the, on the previous commission, Nick Viti was counsel for the previous commission to fill us in if we have any question about what was behind all this. But my recollection, it had to do with members of Board of Finance that were serving on Parks and Recreation. And then when their finance, when the, the budget proposal came from Board of, came to the Board of Finance, that member who also sat on Parks and Recreation couldn't vote on that item. So it became a bit of an issue.
I'm okay with this.
Yeah.
Can, is there any thoughts to the contrary, how, how, you know, we're looking at it from the position of the conflict of interests? Is there any reason to keep it the same?
Presenting problems. Those, those problems.
I mean, objectively, I'm not looking, I'm just.
The problem that, 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 I don't, can I keep going? Sure. The problem that our town enumerated was basically if you're on the Board of Finance and on the Park and Rec Commission, and Park and Rec comes up for funding, you then take one member off the Board of Finance because they have to leave. That's the biggest conflict and that, that has come up.
And if you're already, already close to not meeting the forum, they could leave and then you lose a court.
Makes sense. I mean, I liked it, but I didn't know there was another.
And just, I mean, going back a little bit further, the reason that paragraph is in there is that there is a state law that says you cannot, a charter cannot prevent a, an employee of a town from serving on any board except land use, Board of Finance, and any board that. So basically, this is, this is mimicking the state law. But in order for us to engage this prohibition, we have to actually have it in our charter. Because otherwise, and it goes back to way back when Tim Burke was on the Board of Selectmen and oh, no, sorry, he was Parks and Rec Director, ran for, for, for Selectmen, won a seat. And all of a sudden, it looked like a conflict with our charter, but our charter conflicted with state law. So he was able to take his seat and we had to change the charter, the next go around to comply with law.
We have one thing we've agreed on.
One thing. Everyone, any other questions, comments, no?
Just a question on procedurally, how you want to deal with these items? Are you going to discuss and then vote on them individually? Save the vote for later, take the time to the room?
I mean, now that I'm thinking of it, I think we probably should pass a motion, raise a motion to to approve the changes proposed by the 2018, 2019 Charter of Vision Commission. We discuss it and then as we go along, if we need to make any adjustments to that, then we can do secondary motions. Maybe to do that.
That works, just, yeah, I just want to keep notes in, in drafting what's in, what's out, making provision.
Then would you go do the other ones separately, Mr. Chair? Like the things that were not in the 2018?
Yeah, so then after we've finished looking at, at their work, then we'll go on to the Board of Selectmen's proposals. And then once we do that, we then go on to any other proposals that came from public hearings or elsewhere. So if you think that's appropriate, then.
Especially with ones that you kind of already come to consensus with now, I would dispose of them. I would dispose of them as is, and.
Right.
I don't know that we need a motion for every single.
Well, just to begin the discussion.
Consensus, I mean, if we don't get consensus, then you, then you start taking notes that didn't work.
We're, we're talking about one motion for all of these, and then we discuss them, and then we.
And then we make some. Yeah, some motions to make exceptions.
Correct.
Okay, so would someone like to make that motion?
Come, just, just to expand upon what John, it says, basically, we would have a consensus whether or not we further discussion, maybe more research needs to be done, or we collectively agree. But it's non-binding, something may come up at the next week's meeting after thinking about this that may be valuable. Is that my, my understanding of what you're saying?
The, well, I'll, I'll go back to Nick. Nick, do you think to have this discussion, we should have a motion on the table?
Well, it is an agenda item, so I think you could go either way with it, to tell you the truth.
All right, then we'll just continue on without.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're deliberating on an agenda right now. I don't know necessarily that you need an overriding motion to do so. But we have minutes, we have the tape, and we have my notes.
Okay.
Come to a consensus on some of these and give direction, followed by subsequent motions, provisions, and things of that nature. That.
So do we have consensus on this first one that we can move on, so we can?
I do want to add one comment, it's something I've noticed, because when we did this, we looked at directly what was in the last one from 2018.
Right.
As I read the, as I read what we're doing here with this, in section C2-5, the first part is adding Board of Assessment Appeals to the prohibition, right? That no employee can do that.
No, no, that's.
No?
That's in your proposal from the Board of Selectmen.
And that's the next item on the agenda.
This was from 2018. Proposed by previous BOS and adopted by 2018 Charter Revision.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that, so I'm, I'm showing that, yeah, the, the Charter Revision proposed and approved by the Charter Revision Commission and approved by the Board of Selectmen, simply says, "In addition, members of the Board of Finance shall not concurrently serve on elected or appointed municipal board or commission during their time in office." It doesn't cover Assessment Appeals. That's a new proposal.
Okay, so when we submitted this letter, Board of Selectmen submitted the letter to the Commission.
Right.
The, the letter from July 16th. All the proposed modifications to the charter were outlined. And what the current Board of Selectmen did was voted, we left things in here with a note at the bottom that they were in the previous 2018. So, just for example, section C2-5, eligibility for office, right? That's the first one that came up. The previous Board of Selectmen in 2018, and it was presented it and adopted by the 2018 Charter Revision. Then the current Board of Selectmen presented it again, because we did everything that was in 2018, we presented it again. So that's why, so the only reason I would bring it up was, I noticed that with respect to the conflict interest of the Board of Finance, that probably should be in section 3-5. And I didn't, because we just took this exactly what the previous Charter Revision did.
So what's in 3-5?
So 3-5 would be the section where you're talking about the Board of Finance itself. Seven members, each of whom should serve four years. That probably, I, I don't know, maybe talk to the attorney, that probably is where we would put something if, if you were gonna restrict a Board of Finance member for being on multiple boards.
Yeah, I mean, you might want it in both places, because 2-5 is eligibility for office. So, but.
Sure.
The Assessment Appeals is not in.
Well, it was, it was certainly in the letter that the Board of Selectmen approved this year.
I know.
It was in the 2018.
And it's saying that it was in the 2018.
And you say it wasn't.
It's not.
I could, I have a memo that I did not circulate. I don't, I don't see the Board of Assessment Appeals. John, do you remember that prohibition? I, I think it was.
I'll look at it, because I, we took it directly from your minute.
There was discussion at, at some point in time, but I don't recall that that made it into the final draft. And this was the red line of the final draft, and it was corresponding memo and draft.
Are there other, are there other items on there that were not in, were not consistent with what we thought was in the 2018?
That was the only thing that I saw.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not that I know of, because I, I was just going on, but the.
Well, there could be mistakes, I guess, because we had this down, and we researched it, we thought that was in the other one, so. Certainly, you can do anything we want, as long as, I think that that makes it on the docket.
Yeah.
Because it's important.
We're trying not to jump all over the place, back and forth, and all of a sudden, somebody gets it missed.
I just want something to not to give us, because this is what we proposed to the Board.
We're not gonna forget it.
Yeah, and so the other.
Are you at 3-6?
Um, I'm, I'm still at 2-5, and are you thinking then, Dan, and for Nick, that this section should be both in, or this language should be both in 2-5 and 3-5? So it's, it's in Board of Finance, but it's also under eligibility for office.
Then to be consistent, you would have to put it under all the others, the clouds.
Yeah.
Like Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, seems like a, it's really repetition.
It could get very complicated.
Yeah.
So.
It's wordy.
If, if you're looking at the Board of Finance part, I would put that under 3-5. What do you think, Dan?
I don't know, because it follows, it follows the discussion item in eligibility for office, and it has other boards and commissions that wouldn't have that same type of language in their sections later on in the Charter, if that makes sense?
Well, the other issue is this is under elected officers, right? What about appointed? You can't have. Finance and appointed board.
Yeah, that's, this is eligibility for elections to any town office.
Selected.
So no person's.
This, that's a good point that Dan just made, is that eligibility for office would tend to mirror towards elected office and not appointed office.
So is it eligibility for elected office?
What's up?
Should it be eligibility for elected office?
I think so.
Then, then it would need to change, the sentence that you read would need to change, because it does stress appointed as well.
Oh, so you would put this under eligibility for elective office? I would keep, keep going back to 3-5, and you would put it in there that a member of the Board of Finance could not be part of another elected or appointed board?
Could do that. Then there would be no, no other change for C2-5 other than later on down the road, one from discussed potential Board of Assessment. Honestly, I think it works in either section, but if, if, if the Commission believes it's clearer under the section for Board of Commission, you can certainly put it there, for Board of Finance, sorry.
I don't, I agree with you. It's basically wordy and everybody, too inconsistent if we don't do it for all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like the main concern here is eligibility for appointed office, which is elsewhere in the charter. Right, so. So I, I think we just have to take a look and see. I think we like the language, we just have to figure out where to slot it. And we'll give Nick some time to noodle on that. Come to it. If we go into 3-6, it says, "A member shall serve overlapping terms." This is additional language, I think this is simply it's, it's a statement of what's happening. It's a clarification of the precedents. Okay, the next one I see is C4-4. And these are, this is talking about providing public notice of, of meetings. And, I don't know, Nick, do you have anything to?
Yeah, so I can, I can speak on this one, because this appears a lot within the Charter. So, a big topic of discussion was really how a lot of the state statutes address public notices, it means published in a newspaper of general circulation. That's the regular term of art. Those statutes have not been updated. And if I haven't already said it, or this commission cannot do anything that's contrary to the state charter or the state constitution. You can expand on provisions, rework some provisions, but you can't do anything that's contrary. So currently, there are a lot of what we may consider stale statutes that still require publication in newspapers of general publication. Whether that's a hard copy of the News Times, that's a question, a legitimate question, but one that at this time and at the time of the 2019 Charter, we can't change. So we couldn't make a change saying, publication has to be done by posting on the website. That would be contrary to state statute. And this was, again, a big topic of discussion at the last Charter revision. So what we chose to do, or what the Commission chose to do with the help of what I had drafted, was give some flexibility to allowing publication to a medium, an alternate medium that's consistent with the statute. So that when these statutes change, we don't need to come back and revise the Charter. We're already there. That really was the gist behind that change. And it appears in, in a number of sections and what revisions were in the 2019.
So this just anticipates a change in state law.
Anticipates.
Until it happens.
Until it happens, we're pretty much stuck in terms of the medium that we publish, publish notice.
It's worth saying, though, Mr. Chairman, that it is being talked about all the time at the Capitol still. I mean, the lobby, the newspaper lobby has a powerful lobby, so it's still doing what they're doing, but there's a lot of talk about moving it to an online or something else. If, it's very expensive for us, of course, right, it's now, because we do it the News Times, which isn't really well-read in the area anyway. So the minute that changes, we'd love to be ready. So I think this, as a permissive clause, is well worth it.
And really, general circulation, and what is general circulation for in terms of what the, the paper subscription? Query how much is reached, or how many are reached?
Yeah, and how many subscribers are received in newspaper versus how many subscribers are digital subscribers?
So, and I would note for this change, so just for kind of ease of, ease of purpose on, on your, this commission's review, the sections that were changed were C4 or B, D, C4, 5, A, C8, C8, 13, C4, small i, small i, C10, 2, G, and C10, 4, A. Same wording in all those sections on the alternate medium of the publication.
Hey, any, any other comments?
Couldn't we just, you said we can't modify the state statute, but can't you add to it? You, you can add additional requirements, such as it shall be published on the town website.
You can, right? You can, but the, the way, if you were to require something additional.
Yeah. It would be in addition.
Yeah, you still need to comply with, with, with the newspaper publication, no matter what.
But, but in the general sense, you know, we're, we're relying upon that language, I understand what you're saying, that state statute. But us as a board, are we saying that we just wanna rely on, upon that? Do we want to say, you know, that it needs to be published in another form? Because most people, I know, I, you know, I, I read the News Times myself when it's given to me, I don't have a subscription. And there are so many people that rely upon the town website and, you know, other publications. Shouldn't we include it, because it's kind of the reverse of what you're saying? You know, we, we do wanna inform the public, right? No question about that. Well, you know, could there be a, a particular item that says, somebody might say, ah, let's throw it on the papers, no one's gonna notice it, because they don't read it anymore? But that position should be taken as well. Whereas we say, hey, you know, a provision should be that it must be published on the town website.
Well, if you think about a town ordinance or anything that changes, I mean, planning and zoning, public hearings, or any of those kinds of things, they're automatically in minutes, I mean, in agendas in minutes, published. So that the, the general public can get them.
I, I understand that as a, as a matter of normal practice, that's what goes on. But there's nothing that says that it must. That's.
Yeah, I think there is, there is, yeah, there is. Because if, I, I mean, I can only speak from Board of Selectmen and, and planning and zoning, but when we had a meeting agenda had to be posted, minutes were always posted, everything was always.
Had to be hung on the wall out there.
Right, and I, I understand, I think.
What I would do as First Selectman is I would say that is already, the requirement's met. If we turn around and put it in, or say has to be on the website, well, it's already met, because every agenda has to be put out there for everybody. It's already on the website. So I would be careful about dictating something too specific in the Charter, remember it's larger, it's a constitution kind of thing, but it will be on the website kind of automatically.
If it's covered by policy, normal practice, then that answers the question.
And Talis' point is, by the law now, it is, has to be on the agendas, which we have to publish. By all.
It does also bring up a, a good distinction that the commission could just, shouldn't think about in its deliberation. So the Charter is broad-based, right? It's the, the Constitution, the governing framework. Things that maybe evolve more slowly, or, you know, are more specific, there, there could be a place for those, because those could be subject to what's happening at a present time. And there is the ability for the Board of Selectmen to craft ordinances that are generally supposed to be more, it can be changed easier than Charter Revision. Remember, this needs to be elected, I mean, you, you have to pass by referendum, a certain enough percentage of voters. So it's hard to get Charter changes passed. There are more simplistic ways to get certain procedures and ordinance passed, and that's through the Board of Select. So just, there is a distinction with some of the, the changes that might be better suited for an ordinance and, and that of the Charter.
All right, so the next one I see is C6-3, Annual Town Budget Meeting. And this currently the annual town budget meeting shall be held within one of the first seven days of April. And this change makes it fourteen days. Every year when we try to schedule, or the Board of Selectmen try to schedule the annual referendum, they're always dodging the April spring break for schools, and so this kind of gets jammed up. So by giving them the flexibility to have the annual town meeting within the first fourteen days of April, gives them some flexibility. And if you see two on, um, section six, three, B on the following page, that the budget referendum shall be held by machine vote, not less than seven days, change to ten days, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holiday, legal holidays, from the date of the approval, the approval by the budget meeting. So again, that gives us a little more time, and some of the items that I submitted from the registrars, from when this was considered several years ago, by the 2018, 19, we talked about how one time we were so jammed up. The Selectmen had set the dates so that there was only six days. Punctually, seven days, but six working days between the town meeting and when we held the budget referendum. You can't print the ballots until after the budget meeting, the annual budget meeting. And so there was a time when we had a budget referendum, and we didn't have ballots at 1:00 PM on the day we recorded the referendum vote. And they didn't arrive, I think, until two o'clock or so. Meanwhile, we're setting up polling places, beginning twelve o'clock, and going across. So anyway, the previous Charter Revision Commission had. So anyway, the previous um Charter Vision Commission had gone with our recommendation for the six three A one being a fourteen day period for having the annual budget meeting and for a ten day period for having the budget referendum. So any other questions or comments on that? And then kind of a big thing is um in B three, in addition to, so this this language was struck out, in addition to vote on the proposed budget, budget referendum shall also contain non-binding advisory questions as to whether or not each of the proposed town operating budget and Board of Education budget is too high or too low. And so they recommend to take it out, and the current Board of Selectmen suggested adding a just right.
The three bears clause?
Well, is this useful? Is it useful having too high or too low? I mean, does anybody really look at it or the finance look at it?
You can't really get any conclusion out of it because you don't know if they voted yes, but it's too high, but I vote yes anyway, or if they voted no, but it's too low. So you can't, you can't really draw any conclusions out of that data the way it's written.
This was, this was put in many years ago, the just the too high, too low, and a lot of folks have said it's not really worth anything. And I believe this Sir Leonard who came up with the idea for just right. Because if you did at least put another third option, it might give you an idea where they fell or you're in it, whatever.
Yeah, the um and and to kind of get back to the history of why this paragraph in B three was even added, many years ago, the budget had been voted down successfully.
Many times.
And and each time it gets voted down, it goes back to the Board of Finance to make adjustments. And at that time, it went back to Board of Finance and the members said, oh, we don't know why people voted it down, we don't know whether they voted down because it was too high or too low. And so it was because of the Board of Finance saying they have no idea of how to interpret a vote that this ended up going in, so that people would would weigh in whether they think it's too high or too low. But I don't think, I don't think we've ever seen an advisory question on these questions where it came in too low.
Well, it happened in uh New Fairfield.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that what's here in New Fairfield?
Oh, yeah, this is awful for them. But you can't really tell how many people are voting too low but voted yes anyway, or voted too low but voted no, so you don't get any useful information out of that.
If you're not getting useful information, then really what the Board of Finance is dealing with is whether it passed or whether it didn't.
Right.
I mean,
I mean, I I can see their point of view, whoever they were way back then, as to, you know, well, we don't know if we need to raise it or lower it, why are people rejecting it? And it would be rare, except in New Fairfield, that people would reject it, the majority would reject it because it's too low. But, you know, you still, you don't get any, you don't get what they were trying to get out of this particular question. It needed to be asked in a different way.
I think the more compelling question is, do you want to have it be bought up? I mean, and this is something to to bring up or not bring up, is whether, because you vote on the town side and you vote on the school side, if one passes, you don't touch it again. If do we want to open that door again so that if one passes, you can adjust both of them? I mean, I don't know whether you want to go there or not, but I find that might solve. I mean, if you've got the town side that passed in the budget for the, I mean, depending on which one passes, it it can penalize one or the other. If you're not careful, and that's what we want to avoid.
But the too high, too low question is on both of them, right?
Yes.
So on everything.
Yes, yeah. So I mean, maybe, maybe since this item, this paragraph is also subject to the Board of Selectmen proposal, why don't we just pass on this for now, table it, and then continue on and bring it up when we get to the next section?
So, Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
If we're asking the voters to come out and vote, why not give them every tool they can to speak their mind and what they're voting for? That advisory question is not hurting the ballot, there's room on it, so why can't we ask the question? I only came with that think that it just fit or it's just right, the three bears, because the last Charter revision taught the same thing, that we shouldn't have it on the ballot. And my argument is, why shouldn't it be on the ballot? Why, why not give the Board of Finance every tool that they could possibly have to try to read what's going on? And if it wasn't important back in the nineties, when budgets were going crazy and everybody was against the Board of Ed versus the town, there was, there was people that were saying, go out and vote no, too low. So they thought it was a good tool back then, why can't it be a good tool today?
Because it's poorly written, you can't get any useful information out of the way it's presented.
That's that's the only question I would have, if it gave you.
How else would you write it?
It, oh, no.
Well, no, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we should, we should, we should pass it later.
Can I finish my sentence, just let me finish, can I finish my sentence? I don't disagree with you. If it's a useful tool to the Board of Finance, I have no problem in amending it or working with it, whatever, whatever we do with it. Um if it's not, and I've always found it to be very confusing, unless unless it's an extreme case. Sometimes in an extreme case, you really get information out of it. But I think going back and we're waiting for the Board of Selectmen's input on this is when we ought to be discussing it. So, yes, Talis, I'm in favor of tabling it.
So, okay, so we will table C six dash three B.
Can I answer his question, though, about how it would be meaningful?
Sure.
And and to get any useful information out of it, the questions you need to ask are, I voted yes and it's too high, I voted no and it's too high, I voted yes and it's too low, I voted no and it's too low. And then let's put it just right, I voted yes and it's just right, I voted no and it's just right. That's going to give you the information that you would need to make decisions as a Board of Finance first. So.
I mean, just to answer, I could vote, it's it's yes, but I think it's too high.
And I could vote yes, and I think it's too low, and the Board of Finance doesn't have any information that they didn't already have.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I would like to, to Talis' point, this would be valuable only in extreme circumstances right now.
Yeah.
And that's why I think it's important to be on the ballot.
Yeah, New Fairfield got very valuable information. And I think having, even if we did not even add a just right question, that makes it more useful. Because if the majority of people vote just right, then the Board of Finance knows they've got it right.
That gets true, if you pay attention to the uh the actual votes, when it comes to the advisory question, a lot of voters don't answer it at all. So those may be the just right category. Okay, thank you. Um. So again, tabling six C, uh C six dash three B. And.
Which document are we looking at now?
We're, we're looking at Nick Beatty's markup, which is the approved um Charter Vision proposals. They were approved by the Charter Vision Commission from two thousand eighteen nineteen, and they were approved by the Board of Select.
And they have wide, they have wide margins on the side.
Okay, and they came in an email from Mary for this meeting, or they came?
No, no, from Nick, immediately after the first meeting.
Okay.
Possibly within twenty-four hours.
It's in the very next day.
Um so probably August fourteenth, no, um no, July seventeenth or so.
It says proposed Charter changes February twenty seventh, twenty twenty. So we'll get now, yes.
For copy, not the attachment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, if it's a, if it's a, shows track.
Okay, so um the next item looks like C six dash five E.
Oh.
And it's, and it's same sort of thing, it's extending the time for petition to overrule. It says the Board of Selectmen shall then fix the time and place of such special referendum, which shall be held not less than ten, change from seven, not more than fifteen, change from fourteen days after the certification of the petition. So.
No objection.
Got a question there? Okay, so then.
I don't want to speak for everybody, that was just my.
Yep, everyone, okay?
Yeah.
So going on C six dash eight, action requiring a referendum, and there's a lot of new language here. And, I don't know, Nick, do you want to kind of go through maybe what was, what was happening here? But some of it is related to utility, public utility projects.
Yeah, so let me see if I can jog my memory. A lot of this discussion um first came out of the police uh station budget and contracts and whether or not there should have been um a maximum contract before the voters voted on it, and because I don't remember the whole mechanism, but there were a lot of mishaps that came out of uh the police, the new construction, out of police station.
We we also put water loans in there.
Correct, so that's, that's the first, the first change is capital utility projects increasing a threshold. And that was more to meeting with the times. Um but there was in B is is more in line with the police construction, the police building construction, where there was a lot of discussion at the last Charter Revision Commission on how let me think if I can recall this correctly. So the original budget that came out was just based upon architectural plans with with no definitive number. And the voters voted and then that number kept on changing. So essentially, uh what this language does is mandate that there be completed construction plans before there's a vote on a capital project such as such as that. However, we'll carve out, um because there is some instances where, like the schools, like if you were renovating a school or doing a project where you're getting state funding, uh or perhaps even federal funding, where you cannot by law have this completed construction contract. It is kind of a done on a precursor base, but we might not have all of these. So at the end of the day, for those certain instances, there was a carve out where that went back to the Board, the Board of Selectmen waived this in certain instances as well. That's essentially the language that was at. This was hotly deliberated at a number of of meetings and
because of the police station.
It it was, it always the add-ons on the add-ons, and we thought that a conceptual plan wasn't planned or engineered drawings to come up with a real number of what the project was going to cost.
Well, if you go back even further, you look at the library, and that was just difficult because uh the the state of Connecticut had promised a certain amount of money, we went to the voters for the difference. And it was, it was at the same time that they were voting on the middle school, so it went through because of the middle school.
It was a package, right?
It was a.
Very school.
It was a, it was the middle school library pro, I mean, yeah, library, middle school prob uh project. The difficulty was, is that the state funding came in so late, it took us a year and a half more to get the state funding. So everything we voted on was now an obsolete figure, and you were about a million two behind. And you can't go back to the voters separately, you're also fail, and then you're doomed.
Right.
So, you know, we basically put it out to the Board of, uh we had to go back and say to the uh library board, you can either modify it within the budget that you have, or you can fundraise the difference, and those are your choices. And so they decided to privately fundraise and then build that blank second floor, which was horrifying, but still, that's the way they did it. But that timing is this is kind of what, you know, when you talk about timing, nothing is perfect, and so to have this back door at the bottom for the Board of Selectmen to be able to kind of help nurse it through, I think is really important.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me kind of, first one if I could, um so kind of where uh Trenton Bean was going, the requiring the referendum for capital project excess of a million, it requires uh us to do the referendum anything now, but sometimes things come along that are funded by grants. And that that is what the issue is, is that, and I'm just going to read this. Uh currently, six dash eight applies not only to all taxpayer funded capital projects in excess of a million, but also by extension, all capital utility projects not funded by tax revenue, rather by user fees. So this is like the water stuff. The referendum requirement comes into play even if utility projects have no impact on the town budget and do not rely on general tax revenue. In the past, the referendum has been required just to approve the acceptance of revolving water loans from the state in order to maintain and improve the town's water system, even in cases where the state has mandated certain repairs and upgrades under penalty of fines for noncompliance. The low limit of one million has resulted in harmful delays, expenses of conducting uh referendums in order to execute non operational system upgrades. Here's the, here's the recommendation, raise a referendum triggered to two million for capital utility projects that are funded exclusively through user fees, grants, and or loans. So that's what the language should do. It's so, any other capital project we're still doing, it's still going to require a referendum from the end on a project. But if the water utility is getting something exclusively, you know, a one and a half million or something like that through loans, it at least raises that threshold to two million, then we have to have a referendum, similar to doing the Bergstrom dwell project, right? That's a huge number. So it required a referendum, even though everything's going to come back to rate payer dollars. Because does that make sense?
Is this wording in the in the document that you gave us?
Yeah.
No, no, it's in front of us.
Yes, that's okay.
That's, that's in the, so the last Charter Vision Commission.
That was, that was the proposed.
And the select.
Yeah, and there was a lot of debate on that because all, any, any utility project was over a million dollars. So Richie Straight said, you just have to do that because we're just, you're never going to, you're never going to get one at nine hundred thousand, they're always a million something. So give us that tool so we can keep the the progress going with the utilities.
Right.
And we felt as a commission, because it's all user base, okay? So anybody that says, well, the town of Bethel, the taxpayers, we we probably use the most water in our schools and our public facilities, but we felt like it wasn't a tax that somebody was paying on Stony Hill, it was going to be a user fee that was going to pay that those loans back.
Is this, is this something that we should table and come back to when we've got the other language with us, I mean, the other language from?
Which other language?
Well, you know, this is what, no, everybody's in our favor of this.
No, that's just, oh, that is what's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So that's what the, that's what the document does, but the the reasoning is from a letter of what, why we put it.
Now I'm, now I do.
I'm just trying to provide context, I'm sorry.
We raised it to two million for a utility, but we kept any other capital project at a million.
And I may have.
Fire truck edition.
Again, but running over the threshold, because that there is importance, importance to that as well.
I'm glad you said that, because I was about to say that.
Yeah. Yes.
Is is there a process, just say it's a two million dollar process for utility upgrades, is there a process through that uh where people that are being affected by that rate you know, has public input to whether or not, you know, it's a good idea, or is it just the people on the commission? You know, because obviously, you know, hey, we need five million dollars tomorrow, and by the way, your rates just tripled.
So like all, like all commissions, there is public input at the beginning of.
So there is that safeguard in there.
There is, yeah.
That's what I assume.
And and the last time the Charter was up, when we were talking about eighteen or nineteen, it was when the town decided not to sell the water system. And and I was saying, guys, we already, the answer's already done, the town decided that they want to own, be in business with selling water, so you have to spend the money. Richie Straight told me, there's no project to keep the water flowing that was under a million dollars, so make it two. That's kind of where that came. It wasn't just to give them a free faucet to spend whatever they wanted, it was just a need to try to fix the water system that that we were behind on.
I just wanted to reaffirm that there was a process for the people affected to have sex.
Yes, so if I'm understanding this correctly, even if it's being paid for by the rate payers and not taxpayers, the taxpayers still have to vote to approve?
After two million.
After two million.
Why, why should the taxpayers have to approve it at all if it's not taxpayer money?
Well, I think there needs to be some some relief vows, that that's what we were thinking, that there needs to be some oversight, you know?
The the, I think the argument we've gotten is that you're using the faith and credit of the town.
Right.
Right?
The town owns the water system.
Well, it's it's that, well, yes and no, I mean, public utility, somebody owns the water system, but yes, towns owns, but you're using the full faith of the town for the borrowing. Right, and that, and that, so there's that piece.
Okay, so the town, the town is borrowing it, so it does affect the town in a correct, that's.
Yeah, you could, you could.
That's in our ratings.
Yeah, you could definitely argue with that.
Yeah, the Public Utilities Commission doesn't do the borrowing of the town.
Towns ours, yeah.
So.
I don't think any voter will understand that, but okay.
It's hard to explain, yeah.
Well, but there was, there are plenty of voters who go to the voting booth to vote on a public utility water project randomly, and they say, I'm not even in the district, what am I voting for? Random and they said, I'm not even in the district. What am I voting for? So.
If you bring up a good point is explaining this change to the voter is going to take some importance because. It might just seem.
Like you said.
Ticket of a million dollars and I'm not.
Making sure that the rate payers have a say in this or can can complain beforehand or whatever, kind of putting that on all the taxpayers to say. We have the legal right to say yes or no on this. So we're gonna say whether this is good for the rate payers or not, even if I'm not a rate payer.
And that, and that could be a problem. I mean, we could, uh, uh, the Burkeson well is a great example. The Burkeson well is a huge project and it needed to be done. Uh, had the town rallied against it somehow. And the rate payers would have been essentially in deep trouble.
And the rate payers are also taxpayers. It's just that there are more taxpayers than.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, ready to move on? Um. So we have C seven dash one E. And we probably quickly line the next one. The provisions of this section has to do with appointments by the Board of Select. And then provisions of C seven dash five shall govern the removal and resignations. Of appointed officials. So now we can just go on to C seven dash five, to the next page. And A has to do with written notice of resignation by any member. Elected or appointed to the Board of Commission. Um, and it says, if he doesn't specify a date, then it's considered. Effective immediately. Uh, however, one thing that's, that's a big change, it's effective upon the receipt. Of the resignation by any of the following. One is the Board or Commission. It's not really clear whether that's every single member or any one of the members. So that's, that's, and then. And then, um. The Board of Selectmen or the Town Clerk. Right now, to be effective, it's gotta go to the Town Clerk. And I was talking to Lisa Ferg about this today and she wasn't aware of this having been. Come up in the last Charter Vision proposal. Um, and she's gonna look into it too, but she thinks that. She is required to have the original resignation letter. So somehow that original resignation letter has to make its way. To the Town Clerk to be part of the town's records. And so if we are opening it up for resignations to be submitted to. A Board or Commission, then I think we probably should be saying the chairman there rather than the board. Uh, and the same thing, instead of it going to the Board of Selectmen, maybe the first selectman. It, it has to be written in that it's their duty to get the original resignation letter to the Town Clerk.
But the problem stems from it, it was, it wasn't going to one office. It was just going all over and then no one knew what to do with this. It was undated and well, what's, what's going on? Where, who, are they resigned or aren't they resigned and when?
The attempt was to try to get some clarity of that. Um, if there needed to be some, some revision, because I do see your point. On the Chair of the Commission rather than just naming the Commission, but or.
Well, one of the things that you could possibly possibly do is just, you know, your, your resignation can be, uh, as Tim suggested. Um, given to the Chair of your Board, the First Selectman or the Town Clerk. But it is not dated until it's made into the hands of the Town Clerk.
Yeah, it's not considered effective, right?
Not effective until it's been received by the Town Clerk. It can be submitted to one of those three people, but until it gets to the Town Clerk, it's not effective.
So then it becomes the com- the Chairman of the Commission's responsibility to get there or the person that resigned?
So whoever received it, yeah.
Who, yeah, well, you know.
Problem with that is then you're putting the onus off the chair.
Right.
And we've got a number of. Might not be all aware of of Charter provision.
Everywhere else that says resignations go to the Town Clerk.
Yep, right.
So.
That's, it's fine with me to just delete the other two.
I, I think the, the other, the other part of this is, is doing a resignation process. But also identifying who is the authority to remove in a point of work number, right? That's, have you got to that part yet or?
No.
I have all section C. Is that wrong?
Yeah, it's C seven. There's, this could be a new Charter section. It was proposed new Charter section, C seven five.
Okay, so this isn't the thing that I didn't get.
Yes. The red line top.
Okay.
So, so can I make a suggestion that we take out? Um, one and two, and simply say upon the receipt of the written resignation by the Town Clerk. Takes the burden off the Chair people, certainly takes the burden off the Board of Selectmen. Prevents, um, any possibility of doubt. You know, but I gave it to, and why didn't you do what you're supposed to do, kind of thing?
It also simplifies and clarifies if it's a board chairman that's resigning. They can't give it to themselves per se.
Right.
It would go to the Town Clerk anyway. So we just have it go to the Town Clerk for everybody and simplify.
So it would end with written resignation and then be the Town Clerk.
Written resignation. Um, receipt by the Town Clerk.
Yeah. Receipt of the written resignation by the Town Clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're getting rid of any one of the following. So.
The only comment I would, I would make and I, you guys, I'm not wedding to the language, but I think the impetus behind it was. Operationally, that was not at all what was happening. So people were resigning, thinking that they were. Had been resigned for quite some time, but there was no, no one passed along the information to the Town Clerk. No one knew. And and it was, we were just in limbo.
And others were moving out of state and not resigning at all. So, right, that's lots and lots of trouble with that.
We have correspondence about that section. We should probably talk about.
So I, I'm just thinking that we need a little more input from, from Lisa on this and she can check with Secretary of State. But I'm, I'm suggesting that C seven dash five, which is table for now, but I, I think we definitely need to make some adjustments there. Um, but we can go on to the B section about being removed.
What about, so we wanna talk about this, your correspondence about, um, C seven, one C, which is people that move away?
Um, that's later in the agenda. So that's, that's later in the agenda.
All right. So we'll come back to this section at that time. Okay, that's fine.
That must be, so, um, yes.
I, I think it belonged with the clerk because your appointment started with an office of office through the clerk. That's where it originated and that's where it should end. Plus, there's a central point repository for. That, that information where it's like, well, call that chairman, maybe have it, no, it's filed with the Town Clerk. I assume that there's. Process in which it's filed into the official record, I assume. And that's where it should lie, period and.
I mean, one, one possibility could be that in the appointment letter, appointment letter from the First Selectman's office. And say, should you ever need to resign? You submit your written resignation to the Town Clerk's office.
Yeah.
Then when the Town Clerk office, the Town Clerk swears that appointed person in, she can reiterate. Say, if you ever resign, bring that resignation letter to me.
I think it should be even farther spelled out. You could have, say, the person just disappeared, right? We don't, never showed up to a meeting, never did anything.
Well, that's B. Okay, so we'll move on to B. Um, and I don't know, Dan, you wanna talk about this or Nick? About, you're basically removing an appointed, um, member of a Board or Commission. Based on, let's see where the list is.
This is, this is where somebody leaves town too, and we have the ability just to, instead of seeking them out for a copy of a resignation letter. Were able to say, no, you're no longer on the board. Same thing for will for the collective duty, inability to serve, conviction. Uh, or abandonment of office, maybe they're just MIA.
Not showing up.
Not showing up for stuff, then we have the ability to do something. Um, it's an appointed office. So the Board of Selectmen. Should have complete control over whether or not their point stays. It's not the same as a level as an elected office.
Now, there were, there were some decent safety protocols that were put in there as well. And I think there was some. Considerable deliberation on behalf of the last commission. So it's not, it's not just the Board of Selectmen pulling the plug. There, there are, uh, you know, a public hearing requirement, a notice requirement. So. Uh, but this, this was a big issue and I think probably still is a big, big issue.
It's only happened once in the last year, but yeah, somebody totally moved and did. You know, and there was somebody else, I think, who owned an MIA.
It can happen. There was no ability to, to remove them. So.
Right.
Can I just ask, um, why a public hearing? Curiosity.
Well, again, again, that was the last commission's logic, um, given. So you have an appointed board.
For transparency, there, you know.
You're removing someone who's not on the board.
Right.
Our public hearing allows them to speak for themselves.
Right.
But there's other, no other provision for them to speak.
Now, and that, and you, you take that to the nth degree. That's only if they, they're not showing up for any meetings for a year and, and say, I don't wanna be removed. Because I haven't showed up.
And, and to be honest, from, from my point of view, I could agree the way. I mean, the appointment is the Board of Selectmen's appointment. The Board of Selectmen should be able to decide without equivocation whether somebody stays or not. However, we're always very interested in transparency. You know, you don't want something happening, you know, for a, for something silly or punitive or there should be a, a redress or something.
One more check.
Public hearing would do that.
Yeah, the only concern, the only concern I have about, um, is that yet. Willful neglect would be not showing up to three consecutive regular meetings or half the board's yearly meetings. The only special board I'm thinking about is the Ethics Commission that needs as needed. And they probably have one regular meeting per year and the rest is a special meeting if a case comes up.
How's that, Mary? So you're, you're nodding your head.
I don't, to my knowledge, they don't have scheduled meetings.
They have one, one per year to elect officers.
Yeah.
And so if you miss that one meeting, then you're subject to.
Yeah.
Cause that's the only one. You missed a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So.
Well, if you're on the board and you only have one meeting, you should be there, but I, I understand.
Yeah, but maybe the, the Chair named the date and it happened to be the date when Penny's on vacation. Somebody's away. So.
But there's an excuse, right?
There should be a process.
Yeah.
I would assume that if it brings, comes to the attention of whatever commission, committee, board, whatever it is. And that person is, you know, being designated as a non-participant, there should be a process in which the Chair sends them the letter. Or whatever means of communication. And if after a certain period of time, there's no response, then there's a process to remove and replace them. And it should be that simple.
Yeah.
And then we had boards and commissions that weren't, you know, they just weren't active.
And sometimes people who were appointed just aren't showing up.
Right.
Or, or maybe something up else came into their lives where they had a regular commitment that same night every month.
Well, they have a responsibility. If they can't make the meetings, then there's a process for them.
Yeah.
The, the position of being silent is, can be as vocal as being vocal. So. If you sign up for a commission board, you have an obligation there. And sometimes by not going, you're promoting a certain position or not. And I think at the least you have an obligation to show up. You don't have to speak, but you have an obligation to be there.
I just wanna go back to the public hearing thing. Let's say, for instance, that upon a finding of cause for their removal. Following a newly noticed.
Finding of cause is, is that deliberately vague?
No, because it's defined.
It's already defined.
As willful neglect of duty. The inability to serve. May constitute cause.
And that's why it's public hearing. It may constitute cause. It's, it's not, this is not a, um. What do they call it? I forget what the term is now. Did you get to come and say your piece like? Yeah, I wasn't really convicted of a felony that someone with my same name, it was mistaken identity, it wasn't me, whatever.
Well, do you guys remember, well, your old, your old? Now, remember, what is his name? Jefferson Madison, the guy who had the presidential names? He was a felon that went around the country and used presidential names for first and last names. And all of a sudden just moved away and he was on planning and zoning. And he just wasn't around anymore. No one could figure out. They couldn't get rid of him because his. Seat was due. But this guy ended up being convicted of felony because he was impersonating. People that didn't exist, collecting all kinds of benefits for disabilities. Oh, yeah. He faked his death. I mean, no, the guy was really a piece of work and there is no possible for getting rid of.
Oh, you mean George Santos?
See, this guy had gone around, I mean, what was he? Jefferson Madison or something like that? He was some other presidential name. And there are like four or five instances anyway. That's an example of, uh, you kinda let it, need to let it go.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus there, except that again, seven dash five A, we're gonna kind of. Continue to work on, we talked to the Town Clerk and she talks to the Secretary of State. So the next item I see is, uh, C seven dash fifteen Insurance and Pension Commission. And it's simply, members serve overlapping terms. That's nothing new. It's just.
I think, I think you may have skipped over.
Oh, C seven eight, yeah, C eleven, seven eleven, seven eight. Editor's note.
Um.
No, editor's notes aren't new.
Okay.
C seven eleven deals with the public utilities.
Oh, I see. Four members.
Changing from five to seven.
I see, yep. So.
That's why we're using.
We, we might want to, um, tweak the language a little bit there in case we end up with more than three Board of Selectmen in the future. Maybe say three of which shall be from the Board of Selectmen. Right now it says three, which shall be the Board of Selectmen, because we have three.
Well, it's, it's, it's a good point because there was something brought up at the public hearing.
Right.
Changing the number of, of selectmen. So. I, I, I think you probably need to table this because that could affect that depending upon the outcome of, of the commission's deliberations on. The number of Board of Selectmen.
Or just change the language to cover future expansion and then we're good.
But then it's, you know, then how are those members of the Board of Selectmen chosen? Cause right now it's automatically.
Right, right. Well, the, the other, the other part of this is you leave the first selectman and you leave, anybody else is at large. You know, instead of having the three selectmen run the Public Utilities Commission. It's really a purview of what the first selectman does. Um, or no, or no selectman. I think you leave the first one. I mean, it makes sense. Maybe if we had, if we had five, I wouldn't necessarily throw five on board. That's nutty.
The rationale for.
If you give it away, then you could put all five on or you could have three of the five. Yeah, that's a lot. What are you saying then?
The rationale for this change was that the P U C is really technical for, uh, that.
Yeah.
Their members who are appointed have a certain expertise or should have a certain expertise and are not laid before. And the Board of Selectmen, if they're three of the five, they're, they're in an outnumbered position because they don't have that. So it's trying to get some more people with that expertise on it.
So this goes along with the other areas which we'll look at in the future. Um, about the idea of appointing, um, appointing commission people. Or ward people. Um, it doesn't say anything about minority representation.
That's built.
It's, it's, it's already elsewhere in the Charter.
Well, it's built in when you only have a three Board of Selectmen.
No, it's built in for every appointed board and every.
It has a list of how many people are on the board, what constitutes.
Oh, look what I found. It's a C two dash three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So your, the other wording in here that I think needs to be thought is, um, the term of the selectman members shall run from the time that. the term of the selectman members shall run from the time that they take office, period. And then it's, I'm still, I'm, I'm still on C seven dash eleven. Commission members shall serve a two-year term. Terms of the selectman members shall run from the time that they take office. What if they're not in office for two years? What if they've been appointed to fill a vacancy or something? Are they still serving in this commission for two years?
No, they're not. Once, you have to be a selectman. So I see what you're saying. If they're not a selectman anymore.
Yeah, you're serving by title.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe that needs to be made, made clear.
Yeah. And then the next selectman would automatically have a two-year term or whatever term.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe the terms of selectmen shall run while they are in office.
I.
To make it clear that if, if a selectman leaves office, he's also off this commission automatically. Even if the two years have not come up.
Yeah.
And I want to go back to minority representation because C two dash three speaks specifically that elected board of commission. It doesn't refer to appointed.
Yeah, appointed is in a separate place.
It's under appointed.
Yeah. Um, so I have to find what you pointed. So they're, they're actually slightly different too. Um, and find it there.
Uh, it's. C seven dash three.
So you'll notice that it's, it's slightly different than the elected?
Mm-hmm. So maybe we'll have something when we, when we talk about, uh, seven eleven A, we'll kind of get back to that with, with regard to our consideration of expanding the board selection. And insurance and pension, that's seven dash fifteen, is simply stating the current situation that members serve overlap in terms. And then we have plenty in eight dash one. We're changing the terms to finance director from controller. And identifying the Department of Public Utilities. In C eight dash five, we're making, uh, changing the name of the Director of Civil Preparedness to Emergency Management Director. And also that title of that section, instead of Director of Civil Preparedness, it's Emergency Management Director. Section, anything else? Um, in eight dash nine, Department of Public Works.
Can I back up one second?
Sure.
Um, back on the Emergency Management Director. Um, all the powers and duties not inconsistent with the charter conferred or imposed by said Connecticut general statutes on local emergency management directors. Are, are we in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes? Do they call it the Emergency Management Director now? Is that why we made the change?
Yes. Yeah, that's, we got it in.
Okay, sorry. That was a dumb question.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that was not reasoning.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't calling it something different and there was nothing in statutes. Sorry, go on.
All right. And then C eight dash nine, for the Department of Public Works, it pulls the utilities, the water department out of that department. And I guess it's crossing out the Department of Roads and Town Sewer Department that's coming out as well.
Okay, it's, it's renaming that because now it calls it the Maintenance of Town Roads and vehicles and the maintenance of town buildings.
That's that. Any comments further on that?
And this coincides with the creation of a new department of public utilities that that's what this language is doing, setting up that added section.
And then in C eight dash thirteen, there are just numerous title changes from controller for controller to finance director. That continues for a couple of pages. And then and under like, I don't even hear, it's, um, eight dash thirteen, C four, talks about, um, procurement. For any and all purchases or procurement under this section shall use the purchasing, oh, purchasing cooperatives, a pooled type cooperative arrangement. It's authorized for use by the town of Bethel. So that often is set up by, what, the state of Connecticut, um, General Administration Services, GAS?
And this was brought to us by Terry Onskin or Superintendent. Yeah, and, and the Board of Ed Education, who was, in essence, already dealing with the, the lower, lower their budget items, but it wasn't technically allowed. Um, I'm not an expert in this because I'm not very familiar with it, but I draft the language accordingly.
I would, I would come to talk that. I've done a lot of government purchasing through the various contracts. And one, one of the issues that I have concern about is that if it's a, you know, end all blanket, you can purchase through these purchasing agreements. Well, I've found, you know, known as state contract, purchasing off the state contract. Well, my experience has been that most often you can get a lot, uh, lower price through a, a different bid. You know, going out independently. So to say they have purchasing power as long as it's on state bid, it really doesn't serve the public as well because I can, I can, I can give you the example after example on how it's not always the lowest price. And it's not always what you want. Um, so also, should there be a dollar amount? And I, and I just made myself a note about, you know, should it be up to a certain dollar amount? And I, I really don't know if that applies, but whenever I see for any end all, a red flag goes up. So maybe someone with more experience can, uh, define that if, if it needs to be.
Yeah, there is that fifty thousand dollar limit in there. But, and this doesn't say they have to use this.
It was just one rule.
But it's, it's, it's available.
Right.
And, and you, there can be situations where the state puts out a big bid for all.
Yeah, I get it.
Paper spot, sort of photocopying services, that sort of thing. And they get a better deal than if a single town of twenty thousand people put out a.
I just give you a quick example.
True, true point though. Those bid, bids are in the other part of the charter. And it requires a bid waiver. Either by us or the Board of Education to do something greater than fifty thousand dollars. Though this is really specifically just allow the Board of Education and us, town, to do something together. Or Board of Education do it with another Board of Education or school, school.
And there's, right, there's also a safety valve too. Because it requires approval at board of select. So they can't, they can't just do it willy nilly without any oversight.
Yeah.
So they're.
Yeah. And then should that be expanded for the Board of Ed?
Oh, it's specifically.
So it shall receive first approval by the Board of Selectmen. But if, if it's a, a school purchase, should the Board of Ed?
Um, not, not necessarily. I mean, there are many times where the Board of Selectmen actually have, because the Board of Selectmen actually have the first strings.
Right.
Well, for finance, but more selectman controller. And part of this too is also talking about having the procurement committee involved, which is really just the comptroller myself and, uh, our purchasing person.
You mean the finance director?
Yeah, finance director, sorry. It hasn't changed yet. So I'm still saying it.
Um, so speaking of which, is, is the procurement committee defined?
It is.
It, it is. It's under the comptroller.
Okay.
Good. It just gives them over what it is.
Yep, who it is.
My point is that it's just sometimes easier for a manager to just go to the state bid and said they, and, and to basically say they did their due diligence when they really didn't. And that, that's my point before what you're saying. You believe you have enough mechanisms in place to prevent that to a degree.
So, so your point, this, this is not going to state bid. This is for them to get together, doing something altogether outside of state bid. Probably have to live on their own. It allows them to collaborate. Do it. That's where I've always understood.
So, so maybe it would be Brookfield, Fairfield, Danbury and Bethel come together and put something out to bid.
Yeah.
Saying we need to buy so many.
Yeah.
Yards of sand.
They would just go to state bid.
Right.
Like they're going to get a lower deal like you're, like you want. But wouldn't hold that thought when we get to the bits.
Yes. Okay. And then we continue on, on that same page with, um, the notice requirements and other medium consistent with the, uh, Connecticut general statutes. More finance director, controller, language switch. Uh, and then we have in paragraph E, um, the information technology department is introduced there. Have a couple other changes, financial director and controller. And then in eight fourteen, then we have a lot of new language for the Public Utilities Department.
And put a comment on the information technology position.
One of, one of the concerns of the chair to review a conversation I had with the Chief of Police that, um, just wants it to be understood that if we add this, you know, this title and position, that it may not, that person and most likely will not uh, be able to service the police department technology needs. And the reason behind that is that there's posted documents or requirements that the Chief of Police must adhere to called the Management Control Agreement, agreement between the state police, FBI, Chief of Police for access, having access to criminal justice information. Because the state, the, the town, uh, the police department databases interact with the criminal justice system, a whole bunch of security requirements are put in place that the chief must adhere to. So the chief wanted to make sure that the creation of this policy doesn't automatically consume him into that and that that position now is in charge of the police department computers. Because like I said, their, their system is far more complex than artification, including to that within charge of one. And there are criminal, uh, ramifications if you do not comply with this management control agreement and all these other agreements that the Chief of Police has to adhere to. So I just wanted to bring that point out. And that, that, um, was expressed to me through the chief. Though it shouldn't be assumed that this position that we service the towns' needs and other departments is going to necessarily and absolutely fit the needs of the police department because they have a whole different set of requirements.
I, I don't, I don't think that's being.
That the impetus behind this change was the term data processing department was outdated. Um, and there was, there's nothing that changes the mechanism besides adding an IT department. I mean, it's.
There's no additions here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just looking at this.
I, I get it. I just wanted, I had that conversation.
But I think we're going to get there with the, um, with the board of selectmen's proposal. You know, the next agenda item after we finish with.
Well, it's important to make one comment. You don't have to look at it. But I'll just tell you in section eight dash twelve, police department. The Chief of Police shall be the Chief Administrative Officer of the Police Department, shall be responsible in first thing, the operations department. As, as the chief, they have all their own, it's, they don't use our IT for, for the reason you're saying. They don't use our IT, never have. And, um, this doesn't change that. That makes them do it or anyway. He gets a choice because he's the chief. In fact, there, there should be changes with respect to how we do HR. Because we collaborate in HR a lot. As the Chief Administrative Officer, there's also an argument whether our HR or their HR. It gets very complicated.
Yeah.
But to the point that, that, that kind of infrastructure stuff is completely under his purview.
I understand. I just wanted to make that point. When I spoke to him about it.
Yeah.
He, there was always a concern that he may be forced to be stuck with some of the position that was created.
Similarly, the, uh, the Board of Education has their own IT guy. Has their own finance director. So it's, it's really a parallel with that.
I, I say this with a little thought that my experience has been we had a similar situation where the Board of Education, their IT to go for some of the town hall, long story short, ended up being involved with the police department network when they shouldn't have. Fast forward, fast forward, the whole system was hacked. And it was a real mess. Um, but there, that's why the provisions such as this management control agreement, like you mentioning, and FBI security agreements by their in place specifically for this reason.
All right. So moving on, section eight dash fourteen, Department of Public Utilities. So that's all the language. I don't see anything struck out. So next was this, this whole eight dash fourteen is a.
Correct. So, so currently, as we sit here today, there's technically no Department of Public Utilities under charge. Um, operationally speaking, that's really not the case. So this coincides with former Board of Select, Nick Reebokers comments at the public hearing. And it, it was opposed at, at the last sort of revision commission. This was the language that we put up. In both, it, it's, it really kind of tracks or mirrors that of uh, the Department of Public Works, but just had it, adds different responsibilities.
All right. So then it looks like the next section we have is, uh, C ten dash two, about preparation of the budget. And paragraph E or Spotify to add that the Board of Finance shall hold one or more public hearings of a general town budget report. And they added not less than seven days or more than, and this is already existing fourteen days before the annual town budget meeting. Hey, any comments on that? Section G, there's another reference to public, public notice. Another medium consistent, consistent with the Connecticut general statutes. Same thing on the next page and paragraph A.
Want to talk up to the, you know, for that. It seems like it needs to repeat that red part in that last sentence as well.
Where?
So, um, publish a town budget report in a newspaper, I think a general circulation or another medium consistent with requirements of the Connecticut general statute. And then the next sentence says it shall be for the annual town budget meeting again, publish the proposed town budget in a newspaper.
Just to repeat.
So you seem to repeat that clause again.
Good.
My work here is done.
Yeah.
All righty.
Might not be a bad idea to search for the word newspaper throughout this topic.
I, I think I did, but more published, I haven't read or anything.
Oh, I kept, it had nine. Ten nine, it's at the bottom of the page. It goes on to the next page. About setting the salaries.
Instead of proceeding, it's preceding?
Yeah, that's proceeding isn't a word. So that was, that was a problem. And then in the prior sentence, so they could be, have that ten nine. It says the first selectman. So it's just a type of spell check. We'll catch that one.
Shouldn't we change that to select person?
No.
Yes.
No. It's the name of the position.
So when you called it, you were called the selectman?
Yes, I chose to be called selectman.
Okay, that's your personal preference.
Yeah.
You made that choice.
The title is first selectman.
Can we change that?
It's in every state statute that way.
It's in every state statute that way. It talks about the board of selectmen. It, it has.
So I gotta kick it up the ladder then.
Well, we can do what you've got. But it does create a lot of.
Or we could throw it on it, but it's been selected for.
Yeah, it's not men, it's like anybody.
Well, past history doesn't make it from, I mean, that's not the reason not to change it. No. Um, if there is no precedence for selectmen slash selectwoman. Um, if there was, then I have no objection to it, but I don't believe there is. So first selectman is just the title.
And the only problem, I, I mean, um, this is nothing to do with quality, but the only problem is that state statutes have not been updated. So if we're calling it something.
Right. I understand that. Can't call it something different than the state is calling it. So we had to leave it alone.
That's probably the biggest reason.
If they change it, I have no objection to having a slash in there. You know, is her or is that.
Yeah. I mean, it, it sounds like we're tied into what the state statutes say. And until they are, we're stuck. That, no, that's, I understand. I don't like it, but I just.
And we are going through, I think it's hard to change that.
So this.
I want to bring up something I'm seeing.
Okay. So this language about proceeding, preceding, um, this really goes back to two thousand fourteen charter revision that was approved. And it was focused in on transparency, trying to get the the salaries set during the budget process so that that, that's when taxpayers are paying attention to what's going on. And and so, and after this was passed, I think it was many years before the board of finance actually complied with, with this language. And of course, part of it is the word was wrong, but more recently, a few years ago, uh, our town council and the chairman of the board of finance looked at this language and said, oh, well, this only means that because it says following the adoption of the charter, effectuating the same that the board of finance shall set the, the annual salaries of the elected officials during the budgetary process preceding the next election for said respective offices. And annually thereafter during the terms.
So there's.
They looked at it, they only had to, they only had to do it during the budget session once, if ever again. And for the most part, these salaries were being adjusted in August when people were on vacation, no one was paying attention. But anyway, um, so I think you need to then repeat annually thereafter during the budget process. So you don't get in a situation where words can be used to avoid doing any intent.
What is it trying to say that after the budget is done, but before the next election, they must set the salaries every year?
No, during the budget process. So before people vote on the budget, they know what salaries are worth. But and it also, the idea of doing it before the election, it puts the elected officials in a position where they know what the salary is going to be before they raise their hand, say, I'll run, or any challengers raise their hand, say they'll run.
So are we saying that they've not been doing it correctly all this time?
They haven't.
Well, no, because the way, the way they interpret it.
They, they didn't have to. Changed the change as, as a one-time occurrence, happened after the next preceding municipal election and during the term after this, so not, but not successive terms.
But done at different times.
But you don't, you don't change charter to have things happen once.
The intent, the intent is something different and a narrow read by the black letter of the document. But push it.
Yep. So I believe what happens now is they put an amount in the budget for salaries. And then after the budget is done, et cetera, et cetera, then they say, okay, you get this budget, you get that.
That's the way it used to be. That's the way it used to be. But this change from two thousand fourteen said that you're doing it during the budget process.
So that before they put forth that budget that says salaries are X number, they need to know that salaries are X number for the first selectman or X number for this.
Yes, that's what we do.
Yeah. Okay. So as I left it.
And I think.
When you did it.
When we did it, the salaries were.
And in August, after the budget was already voted for, we wanted to be more transparent.
Yeah, I agree. That when they were, get the first one, they did it at the beginning.
Right.
They should do it during.
Rather, rather than foot forth a number that says here's our total salaries for the budget. It should go to the public as here's the salary, the first selectman, here's the salary for whatever, whatever. All those that get set by the board of finance should have a number that so we know how much is going to increase.
All people.
Some people can complain about individuals.
And think about this, if they're when it was, when it was being done in August, the process is the town committees or the parties have their caucuses to select candidates in July. When the board of finance set the salaries in August, anyone could have said, hey, I would have, if I knew you were gonna not think of.
Agreed.
I would have run. I would have run.
Or better yet.
But that's on fiscal year is the reason it was August.
Right.
The reason it was August is because your fiscal year.
Just into it.
Yeah, yeah.
The first one's a heck of a lot to do.
But in two thousand fourteen, this language intended to do it during budget. So you wouldn't take, you wouldn't actually get that salary until July one.
Right.
But they're setting it during the budget process.
Correct. During public hearings, during.
Yeah. Right. So when that, when that budget that gets published before the town meeting,
It increases in that.
It's, it's in there. And it's not just a bucket of increase. It's, you can look up and see how much the increase is.
It says.
The first selectman.
It's not coming out of a wage adjustment account later.
Right.
It's, it's in the beginning.
Right. That's good.
So the, this one's a little off of instead, expansion of what the last charter revision.
So is it worded directly now? Is it clear?
No, no, it needs, it needs to be changed.
You got a good point.
It's actually a good answer.
Um, so somehow it's during.
On that last conversation, ten nine.
Yeah, ten nine salary.
So all they have to do is.
Oh, you can't see where.
Proceeding.
And put during the budget process. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thereafter during the terms. Thereafter.
Thereafter during the budget process.
Annually during.
Annually during the budget.
Process. Right. Of the charts.
So then the next one I see is C eleven dash eleven meetings.
Oh, it's that important.
Oh, yes.
C eleven nine, word usage.
C eleven nine, word usage.
In the context so requires, the masculine gender shall include the feminine and the singular shall include the plural and the plural the singular. This is a very outdated and offensive way of trying to be gender inclusive and gender neutral. We need to strike that entire paragraph and everywhere the gender is mentioned, we need to use the word they instead of he, she, or she. That makes it completely inclusive and gender blind.
And at the end, like. So the agenda item that this will be in is that third agenda item. So it's when we're bringing up other proposals ourselves plus uh, anything that us presented in hearings, that sort of thing.
Other, okay.
But that's the, so word, word usage.
I'm really good at word usage, but can somebody translate this sentence for me? I understand that the masculine shall include the feminine.
Right.
That's later. The singular shall include the plural and the, what does that mean?
So that means if somewhere if it says, um, the, the, the board, blah, 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 and they shall do blah, blah, blah. What if there's only one person on that board? So it just means they would refer to that one person in that case.
Okay.
And if it says he, and there are three people on that board and they're talking about the whole board, that implies the plural. And also implies.
It's a control and like every legal document.
Right. Because it's outdated and offensive.
Yeah.
And it, it maybe, but that's, I mean, it's.
No, it definitely sounds very legal.
Yeah, no.
And it well, we can talk about it. It's the right point. And then the agenda, I'm sorry.
Uh, so C eleven dash eleven. Down to the last page. Um, so this is regarding, because a previous charter revision, it might have been two thousand fourteen. Um, required that all board meetings take place within this building.
And I can give some flavor on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
There were, there were a whole of uh, mostly public, this came through public comment where there was some strong sentiment that the old police station was a very uninviting place uh, to have commission meetings. And the public was almost discouraged from attending police commission meetings. The old police station. Um, so the thinking at that time was let's just have everything at the municipal center that's above board. Um, thus no discouragement for attending police commission meetings. But there was a change. They, they, that was too, too narrow or slight because flash forward to the next charter revision, we have a brand new police station. It's not as uninviting. There was arguments made by the, the police commission and the police department that the burden of having these meetings at the municipal center was, was unfair. All the records and everything were at the police department. So it was a reversion back on that basis. Um, so this, this allows for some exceptions um, towards public meetings being held in the municipal center. Um, there was also sidewalks and land use commissions and addresses. Those are technically public meetings as well.
Well, the library also came up because they always meet over in the library. And then the other one that was overlooked too was the housing authority. They eat at the housing authority. And they're well attended by tenants. So they didn't want to drag the tenants down to town where they probably couldn't.
I mean, it was really, in my estimation, focused on the old police department and the problems there. And there were some unintended consequences that came with that change. So it has been extra.
And I suggest in addition to this, um, at the clap, the municipal center or a town-owned facility accessible to members of the public or in case of emergency online. We have to do that.
That doesn't work for land use, like sidewalks and stuff like that.
No, it does.
Had to be a town, a town facility, right? Town property.
Well, there's, there's.
Right, there's an exception.
But then there are the exceptions. Right. Right. You're not going to do a field, a field walk online, although it could conceivably be done. But we did that for how long? A year and a half, almost two years. Um, we have people that sometimes join us online and they constitute attendees. So I would like to add, and somebody can word smith, word smith this better um, or online in case of emergency.
Right. The thing, the way that's going is that as an alternative to being in this building, it would be online with maybe every commission member voting it in and not being held in person anywhere. Is that?
Well, we did that during pandemic. We did that during the project.
That was by executive order during the pandemic.
Right.
It's a different question and maybe starting for the commission to entertain whether you want to provide flexibility for online, hybrid or anything like.
I, I, I honestly would say my personal opinion as administrator for the boards, uh, the board should be required to have any physical location for the meeting. Because you want people to come.
Mm-hmm.
It could be a hybrid meeting that's already set up. But I wouldn't want to put the charter now where we're just giving carpal just saying you guys can do all your meetings hybrid. Because you could argue that doesn't actually help all the public. A lot of people want to come in person somewhere. Hybrid is an option. They want people to go off computers. I think having a in-person meeting, maybe everybody else is in hybrid, but there's like on the screens, but we can have somewhere where the actual people can show up and see it. I think that's.
I think as long as, as long as there's the opening for an emergency situation, there's a big snowstorm and nobody can make it in, we can still have a meetup.
Right.
Nobody's here.
Which is why I included in case of emergency. We just had this miserable, you know, thousand year rate. And God forbid something happened to the municipal center, but you still wanted to conduct businesses. It could move over to the Google meet. In case, in case of emergency.
Well, I got, I have a comment on that. I, I always caution the other use of emergency for what may be an emergency to me is not an emergency to someone else. And also the fact that we got to make sure that these meetings are compliant with all the things associated with ADA. I, I agree that the meeting should be held in a building, in person, in a building that's equipped set up where people full access, whether it be hearing, physical, they involve, whatever. But I really get concerned when I hear order of emergency. I, maybe you can define. I would bring up a good point that in your comment, I'm thinking about as well is if you're changing at the last minute in case of emergencies, then the meeting properly knows it likely is. Right. Yeah.
Are all of the meetings hybrid now?
They don't have to be known. Um, many are. We haven't, we haven't said that all have to be a lot, but it's, it really is up to the board to determine if they want to get in, in person.
Because if they, that covers your notice.
It probably notice, yeah. The notices are different.
But it's a little different.
Eight hours.
Right.
Twenty-four for a in-person.
Right. But if all meetings, if all, literally all meetings are hybrid, then your notice is covered. If you have a snowstorm, you have to try to do a, a full online. Because the notice included the fact that you can join online.
Do, put, put all of our meeting rooms, sorry. With site personnel.
Yeah, right.
B, B room B doesn't have equipment for that.
Yes. Oh, yeah, it does.
These, so B is a, yeah.
A, T tennis and yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew it. I knew it. I didn't realize it.
They don't send them all of them. Okay. So I guess the question is, if we don't include your clause about emergencies being online, are we still allowed? Is there a way that we can still do that without violating the charter if there is a giant snowstorm or whatever? And you said it was set by executive order during the pandemic.
It was.
So.
It would be always in this commission's right to, to make everything hybrid.
Let's do that.
I, I would disagree. I don't think it's a good idea, but I'm just saying it, and you're right.
I mean, we have the technology.
But, but listen, here's the, here's the thing. It's sort of like, what if it were an emergency and so I have to have a meeting? I mean, it's, it's usually at last minute, like you said.
Yeah.
It would, and, and if it's emergency, it's probably not a real burning issue to get everybody in a room on that meeting if there's a true emergency. I, I'm all for leading forward and getting things done. I don't know that I would sacrifice getting people into meetings to quote unquote, allow our thing to be hybrid.
Okay.
We're, we're, I think we're cool on participation in our town government with that process.
Do you think more members of the public join meetings when they're hybrid?
Right now, no. I don't think it's, I think during the pandemic it was the thing to do. Um, I don't think now it makes a huge difference. Um, but again, some, we, we do all ours hybrid for a segment for that reason. Um, the order, CPZ doesn't all hybrid because of nature what they do. And then, and they record, we record activity.
The other question.
To have somebody not have access to online services because their power's down or something's happened. And then you're running into trouble if you made it only, well.
If it's hybrid.
Right. If it's hybrid, they can come in if they don't have a computer. Yeah.
But again, I, I, I'm saying, we're having an excuse for people not to participate. And, and a lot of them don't bother, they don't bother coming.
Right.
You know, even if it's hybrid instead, you know, but so we want people to come and engage. That's why it's recorded.
Right.
That's why many of, many of the most important beings are hi- hybrid. I don't think like over, over controlling it because we've talked about this in the board of selectmen, actually. We talked about it, decided to leave it up to every board.
Okay.
That was our, our feeling. Of course, it's a charter revision, you can all rule that.
So if there's a, if there's a giant snowstorm and there is a board of finance meeting that was scheduled that night, they can choose to postpone it.
Yes.
I mean, if that's.
They cancel meeting.
Or if we're on a crunch deadline to get something done before the budget because of the charter says we have so many days to do it. Maybe they do have to have it and maybe they can make.
And those board of finance meetings are hybrid.
Right. So that's, that's a bad example because they're already.
Right. A lot of them are, but again.
So the boards that are not hybrid probably are not going to be in that kind of crunch and they.
Youth commission doesn't do hybrid. Yeah. Youth commission doesn't do hybrid. Library doesn't do hybrid. Uh, police commission doesn't do hybrid.
So.
Because they want people to show up to their.
Before we, before we make it mandatory, we should talk to those commissions and find out why they don't do hybrid. Or we just don't make it mandatory.
I, I think there's a whole, you know, little discussion there because, you know, when you got human interaction, I think it, it creates and prevents a whole lot of dialogue. It's easy to be a keyboard warrior.
Absolutely.
And, and, and it, and it's easier, and it's easier to understand someone's. When you're looking at them, you're seeing all their facial responses, their inflection of voice, and you lose that. And I'm just going to point to, if you think that hybrid is, you know, a really good solution, I think it's a supplement. But I have a very firm position that this hybrid thing takes all that away to just point to what has happened with our children in school. Hybrid learning in school, we know, has been a complete failure on most aspects. The dialogue and, and the, the things that would happen to our kids, I can say one thing for my, my child. So if you think my kid was sitting in front of a computer for five hours a day, you are out of your mind. He's lucky if he got an hour out of it and he barely. He's lucky if he got an hour out of it and he barely passed high school. I will say he's a commercial pilot. He's doing fantastic. Uh, he's Excel. But I can tell you, my experience as a parent with that hybrid was so good. And I think that overflows into town government, the dialogue that's needed for proper you know, dialogue and debate. I think it's very healthy.
As a counterpoint, why not thrive on hybrid? Because she didn't have the distractions of all the social nonsense.
Right, so it should be a supplement.
So there's, and I do agree that meeting in person and talking in person like this is definitely better than being on the screen.
Absolutely.
But I think that if you can get the mom who doesn't have childcare to log into the school board meeting, then she's more informed than she was previously.
I agree. It's a supplement. It's a great supplement.
And I, and I, I completely support that last statement also because you know, I had surgery last year and I could watch P and Z from home.
Yeah.
You know, or Board of Selectmen, I could tune into meetings where I didn't really want to participate, but I kind of wanted to know what was going on and hear who was saying what. No. You know, I wasn't, I wasn't going to go as a participant. And I still do it now and then. I mean, it's like at the end of the day and I'm out all the time at night. I don't want to take another night out. I kind of want to watch a meeting. It's great to have it available, but I don't need to be there.
Yeah.
Because I have nothing to say. I just want to know. And I think it helps.
Well, most of the boards are doing it. I think what, what happens is, you know, man, man, just because you it does have effects, right? There are a couple of commissions that don't need hybrid. The youth commission meets in the teen center. Library meets in the library. Board of Ed, they do some hybrid stuff. I don't think it's mandatory hybrid. So it does, it does have an impact of police commission. Because it, it does have an effect on some of the appointed boards. That would be difficult for us because we don't have so much space to.
Is there, this council, but I'm bringing this up because I am a member of another board and operationally speaking, this is EDC, having on a development as a commission.
Yeah.
We sometimes meet virtual purely, that's it.
But all those meetings are totally illegal.
Yeah. He's having brought it up.
Right.
Uh, I mean, is, do we need to have flexibility to do that? And is there a distinction between an appointed board meeting and elected? In, in, in my estimation, appointed boards, there is going to be less public input, less public comment. Their advisory to the board of selectmen. They're harder to get people to fiddle and, and be active on. I mean, for me, I wouldn't be on anything, see, because the meetings are at four o'clock during the day unless there was an ability to sometimes meet virtually.
What does the state statute say about meeting entirely virtually? Or hybrid? Or hybrid?
I, I don't know the, the answer or it's that it's been revised. I mean, you're only talking about a couple legislative sessions after COVID. I don't know if there's revisions to actually.
There's no mandate that you have to.
Right. I'm asking, are you, are we allowed to? Because I don't want to put something in our charter that violates state statutes if they haven't.
I mean, I think, I mean, remember, I think we're allowed to say have a hybrid option or whatever it is.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything.
I mean, I'm sure the state did it everywhere during COVID as well, but was, was it an emergency executive decision or did they actually modify the sessions to allow?
I will tell you this, I also practice in land use, there are a good percentage of land use boards throughout the state that have never gone back to person meetings.
Well, it's also worth mentioning, land use, I believe, E and Z have to be recorded.
Yes.
Now, they have to be a voice recorder for many, many years.
Yeah, I remember the old.
Just constantly fix that.
Yeah.
They might as well do it. Hybrid and recorded.
Yeah, I, one concern I would have with a mandatory hybrid would be if our IT network went down and we couldn't hold let's just say one, two nights, whatever, whatever. Then all of a sudden you're in violation of the charter.
That actually has to happen because you didn't.
I like the idea of putting something in here so that we know it's allowed. And I like having each board making up of their own mind.
Yeah.
Because that way, like for your example, you know, if you are on that board and you say, okay, I can go into this if it's virtual. Then the board would decide, okay, we're going to have virtual meetings so that you can attend.
Well, I won't throw one monkey wrench in there.
Okay.
Any, any board is allowed to have their board member phone in, call in, use electronic device without any kind of information.
Okay.
It doesn't become a hybrid meeting. Hybrid is only if
public of the public.
Public, you do a forty-hour notice, like forty-eight hour notice. Any meeting I want, I can, I can say, hey, Chair, I need to chime in. I'll take my cell phone.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can listen to the meeting. That's totally okay.
Okay.
It's not to make it hybrid.
Okay. I just, so I want to go back. First of all, hybrid learning was a best I taught throughout the moment. Um, and I taught specifically in Zoom. And when we finally went back in person, the first few weeks were a disaster. Because you have one kid online, you have three kids in front of you. And you're constantly like going through this. It was, it, it was like, it was insane. That said, I think to give it doesn't say here that boards and commissions or commissions have the option of going into a hybrid situation. It doesn't even give that up, give that right option. So planning and zoning. And there, I've been to many planning and zoning since, you know, not on the commission anymore. I go and there are a good half dozen, eight people pretty much in every meeting. And sometimes they just listen and sometimes they chat. You know, kind of thing. Is it the same as being in front of the commission? Absolutely not. But it's a way to find out what's going on. I think that giving boards and commissions the option and enshrining that in the charter is different from saying you must. So if the police commission doesn't want to, if the youth commission specifically wants to meet, you know, in the teen center. I think that's one thing rather than that, but we don't even give the option. It says they must be here or here with these exceptions.
Right. And so it's silent, but certainly this is something.
Right. Yeah.
And I don't think there's anywhere in our charter that says members can attend virtually. So this is really pointing back, it's going back to state law. But if, 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 to Penny's point, by putting it in the charter, it's making it clear to anyone who reads the charter without reading all the laws.
That is an option, yeah. And then I think one second, just want to follow up. Planning and zoning has at least one member that cannot come in person.
Right.
And they are only available online because they cannot get into the building. So.
The board of Ed says same situation.
You know, so commission.
And, and they do have her, they do have her phone in. They have her. Do it hybrid.
Where in?
Right, well, vegetation?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking specifically planning and zoning.
Okay, so, so we'll use both pronouns. He, she.
No, they, because.
But anyway, so, so Board of Ed, there is a, a member who cannot attend. In planning and zoning, there's a member who cannot attend. They both come in by.
They come in.
The only, the only thing that I want to add is because Dan brought it up uh, is the notification, if it's going to include members of the board and it's going to include so, I mean, being a hybrid meeting, notification forty-eight hours rather than twenty-four hours is going to be something that we might have to consider writing into the charter, yes, or is that just?
So that's already, that's already in the, uh, table, I believe, the notification difference.
And it's in here.
That's on the charter. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it because it's the state law. The, the notification, I would leave them all. This is very clear in state law that it's forty-eight hours for hybrid, twenty-four for others.
Not a problem.
Yeah, because that's been addressed.
Planning and zoning changes when they come out. They specifically say in person for in the Google meet and they go.
Right.
Be your.
Yeah, so I'm talking about posting the notice, not a notice to.
If, if you do that in the language, I mean, I guess all that I would say consider is if if it's, if it's optional, then the entire meeting shouldn't be hybrid. The chair shouldn't be at home. Everybody should be at their own home. I would not mandate for that. Because we get back to the whole point of, yes, having hybrid is great because most most committees do it, but there's always a home base. Somebody is here having a meeting and running it. So there's somewhere for the public to come in person. That's what we don't want to lose. Because you can have one person in here and everybody online and have a forum. And for the meeting, but the idea is that you have a physical location for people to come if they don't have the ability to do it online.
So be careful mandating it.
So really, if you open it up, you need to be careful. Definition of hybrid.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I don't think it's right then, but.
Should, should there be a distinction between the requirements for a committee and ad hoc committee, as we kind of heard today? Versus a appointed commission, elected commission? Commit, you know, should, should there be a distinction be made there? And, you know, getting back to the point of, you know, fair access and equal access, all different people, right? We all have different ways to do things. Like you talk about the Google meeting, right? Well, you know, if I want to go create a Google account today, I got to hit I agree and I agreed to fifteen pages of legalese. Well, maybe I'm not that guy. Maybe I don't want to have to share my information with Google and the world. But the town in this case would be saying, well, if you have Google, I don't want to tell you, buddy. You know, so I, I think these are valid points. Now, Lord knows, we all deal with this technology. We're never going to be able to get through it all. You know, we got to in some ways accept the fact that that doesn't mean we have to mandate it. And, and, and getting back to, you know, that in-person, you know, way of doing things, complying with people with all disabilities and abilities, inabilities that we have, I think it's so primary. And, and any of this hybrid stuff, it's all supplements, feel-good stuff. If you want to do it, you can do it, but the main core message shall be in person or however we decide. But I don't think to rely on, you know, doing public business, you know, over the internet only. I know people that their internet stinks at their house. They couldn't possibly be able to stream a meeting, you know, you got, oh, my, I want to watch that meeting. Well, I got to do my homework. I got to watch three videos and you got four kids in the house. Well, guess what? There's no ban. These are common things that, you know, we all deal with.
We're not mandating a red person or, or that's a hybrid. It's online.
We're not mandating online meetings.
But I want to get back to your, to your when you started with all this, you talked about ad hoc committees, appointed boards, elected boards.
Yeah.
They all have to comply with the same freedom of information. So I, it's, it's going to be all the same. Uh, I think we made a lot of progress tonight. I never thought I'm going to get through everything that the previous, uh, mission had done. I'll just, maybe, maybe you can note, um, Mary, for the, for the minutes that we've, we are saving for later or further consideration, C six dash three D. That was regarding referents for capital projects, um, C seven dash five A. That had to do with our resignations going to the town clerk. C seven dash eleven A, which had to do with the public utilities commission. And whether what we're doing with the number of, uh, selections. Um, and then the last one, C eleven dash eleven, which we're just discussing now about meeting location. Our next meeting is September fourth.
Sure. Can I say one, one point of order? Uh, in this, I do not expect to address that, but I believe we missed, we'll say that again. This, I do not expect to address. We missed one change that was in the last revision. It was to C three two.
C three two.
In the terms of office, the last sentence says of is or per successor. So the last mission wanted to, to add a per.
C three two.
But she goes against what that.
So that actually.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I didn't know we were going to discuss that tonight.
So that actually is covered in the technical changes too. Because it, we went back.
Oh, it's the chair.
So change.
Is it her?
Or we can get over thirty-five minute debate on why we can't call her.
That's in later in the agenda was a parent's big one.
I'll bring the chocolate chip cookies.
Um, so Mr. Chairman, did you, did you see six dash three in the town budget meeting?
See? Six dash three.
Then you table that, I believe, section D.
C six dash what?
C six dash three in the town budget meeting. I have tabled, thanks for that.
C six six three.
Oh, yes. Okay. I did, if I didn't say it, I've got it circled here. Yes. And this is, um, yeah, that's the high love.
All right.
So once we get through on the agenda, other comments that we can go over all the correspondence.
We so we, we are nearly done with consideration of the twenty nineteen charter revision commission proposals.
Okay.
And so this agenda lays out everything we need to do.
Okay.
From now until well, I think we need to consider anyway. So we, we finished charter revision commission proposals from twenty nineteen with the exception of these few items. And at the next meeting, we can either take up these items. If we have the initial information.
Is somebody want to speak to the town clerk about?
I've, I've already been in contact with her. So she's, uh, I talked to her today and she's going to talk to the Secretary of State.
About what just came up tonight? You've talked about that already? About her taking resignation.
Whether it's a wet suit or.
I, so when I was reading through the charter revision proposals, I said, oh, this this doesn't sound right. So I called her up and she wasn't aware that in twenty nineteen this had been proposed. So she's going to look into it. So.
So our next order of business is to go through the select lines.
Yes, or, or take up any of these table items that we can.
This may be germane to that.
Right, right.
But then we, so we haven't done the correspondence, A one, A two, A three, A four.
No, we received, we received those.
Right, we have discussed.
We have, no, maybe we discussed under consideration of any other proposals submitted.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So over the next so many meetings, we will continue to get more things submitted, more people that they come in. See us in person.
Yes.
And we, I mean, we're really talking only meeting what? Next week?
We're, yeah, next meeting is September fourth.
Right, right.
Right, every other day.
Okay. Yeah, we have meetings every month through December, right?
Right. Yeah, then we, then we, in December, then we set a, exactly twenty-five.
Right. Oh, you have a, a deadline?
Yes.
Yes, why don't we talk about it? Uh, I believe, and I can check my calendars, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Oh.
That's just sixteen months after your official.
So that's the deadline to give it back to the board of selectmen?
Yeah, so, uh, the draft, your draft report needs to be filed with the town clerk and then goes to the board of select by that date. I should, doing that by memory, so let me just, uh, quickly check, uh, that's.
Well, while Mike is looking at that, I think we have to look at hopefully getting done well before that. Because yes, we would be putting it on as a question in one of the general, in the general election. And I think by September twenty-fifth, it goes to the board of finance, the board of selectmen. They're going to look at it, consider it, possibly send it back for reconsideration, go back. They would hold a public hearing.
Correct.
Uh, and so this would get us way past that. Like the Secretary of State gives us a deadline for this. The town clerk gives Secretary of State gives the town clerk a deadline for submitting questions that we're going to balance. And I think they're going to need a lot more time than that to get the Secretary of State's.
And I was incorrect with my recollection. It's Friday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five is the sixteen month date.
All right. Um, we, if we get done with it earlier, we could still, we could, yeah. No, no, I definitely, we want to, but I, I don't want to treat that September nineteenth as the deadline we're shooting for. Otherwise, it wouldn't get voted on until the twenty twenty-six election.
Is it tapped out of general or can be a special?
Well, that's a, that's a decision because you want. Well, that's a, that's a decision. Cause you want, you want elect, the electorate to come out to get it.
Yeah, right. So the problem is you don't. If, if you have it as a standalone referendum, I think you have to have fifteen percent.
Percent.
Fifteen percent of the registered voters come out and vote in. Well, we can see fifteens percent on the referendum.
Yeah. And that was part of lab, Dr. Carter.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
So, so we really have to shoot for the general election.
Yeah, I believe also once you have the final report, so that after it's gone to the board of selectmen, there's been a public hearing. They may or may not have comment, comes back to you after it's actually deemed vital. Want to say, and I can double check, they have, the board of selectmen has fifteen months. Well, they have thirty days to publish, uh, and then fifteen months for it to run out of balance.
Can I just ask a point of information for communication purpose? Um, is it, X, is it okay if somebody were to put on, let's say Justin's, um, Bethel page? That, you know, there is a meeting, please come, listen, participate kind of thing. Is that accept, is that a point?
They do, sure.
Okay. I just, I don't want to do anything that's gonna cause havoc.
Right.
You never know.
Yeah, we have people that have to.
We can publish them.
Listen, if, um, here's, here's something I'll throw out there because I mean, I have to talk to the board of selectmen, but in the first segment budget, we have a little bit of money for promoting things. We could Facebook this and we could put money behind it. Could be something to do and actually promote this and that. I mean, I'm trying to get that a lot of different ways and all that. Anything, there's a public hearing, I'll start promoting this and we'll just go with it every week.
Send things out, tax bills. Yeah. When you do the, the postcards. And then more and more of the postcards that you got for the, uh, referendum announcements.
What we're doing, we're actually getting ready to postcard to get the provided for Everbridge. And we're trying to get them to set up, sign it for the town email as well. Like we're the one postcard, most things.
Yeah.
Everbridge is fall to it. So we could start emailing these things too. Uh, just, we want to make sure people understand is I'm trying hard, everything just pushed out. Hopefully we'll know about.
I really, I'm hoping to get one or two more steps kind of discussed with this form and then, and then because we haven't even gotten to our, our comments yet. There's one more public hearing, right?
There's one more public hearing required, but that's, that's once the, the report is, uh, in draft essentially. So the public get a.
I'm not advocating people not come. I'm advocating that they have, they see a little bit more. We're probably having more progress under our belts so that there's a better answer maybe to their questions or I, I don't know.
I think it should be public comment, not a back and forth.
Exactly.
Tonight that happened. That was, those were two fire chiefs, but they were the public giving a public comment. And you guys were all going back and forth with them and.
Uh, I'd just like to point out.
Are we not allowed to ask questions?
John, no, it's public comment. They're allowed to tell you as much as you want. You take it in and that's it.
So we're not allowed to ask them questions or for clarification?
Not a public hearing, it's public comment.
No, I, I disagree to a degree. All right. I think that the way it was presented to me, and I can expand upon or clarify anything that, that they.
That was a public hearing last week or two weeks ago.
Right, but if, if, if this, if, am I wrong to, to say that I can't?
Some public might want to come here and hear everything that's going back and forth.
But, but I just want to understand what.
No, that's not telling you. It's really not appropriate to go back and forth.
In a public court, that doesn't mean anything to me. Can I expand upon and clarify a statement that they made? And, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that I want to or I don't want to. I just want to know what the rules of the game are. If someone comes here like they did today, can I engage in a conversation surrounding what they had initially commented on? That's all. And I, I'd like noting.
So Nick, well, it's, it's public comment. I mean, you can, you can kind of dictate the way you want public comment to work. I would, I would.
Sir, to the chair.
Caution you that if they have. Well, that's the same. I did initially. Well, I, I think, yes. If you're asking questions to clarify something they say, that's one thing. If you're asking a question about something that they didn't talk about, what you want information about. You know, I guess the real difference is you have them in front of you now. And it's.
Maybe the word conversation is inappropriate. Maybe clarification is better.
That's what, that's the way I presented.
Clarification.
Point of clarification, that was my words to him when I asked him.
Well, I think you got to decide how we're gonna do that.
Well, the other thing that the commission could do was ask for, invite people. If you've got a role to give them a question or something, we go through, invite the fire chiefs, invite the police chief.
Well, that would be called testimony, not public hearing. And then it would be the judge, right?
The judge.
It'd be right. And then the public would know, hey, if I'm interested in talking about fire department commissions, I need to be.
Yo, I mean, those are from a Robert rules perspective, not that that's official, but it should be, it's in here.
But we should start there. We should start there.
It, the, the chair has a great degree of latitude. It really is up to you to set the tone and how you want public comment to go, even public hearing. You know, whether or not you allow questions during public hearings, technically it's the chair. So.
Yeah, I mean, as, as we did during the last public hearing, I asked that if, if members want a clarification, ask a question.
Yeah. But you shouldn't be going off in different.
You shouldn't be answering.
But it's, but it's.
More, more in your opinion, either.
But it's more corporate, a public hearing, you have to have a little back and forth. Not in the beginning of a meeting where you're allowing, every commission needs to allow the public comment.
Would it be something to think about of public comment when it's placed between seven and seven ten? If you have something to say.
If you're like, yeah, I'm gonna give over two.
Right, it just, or perhaps internally knows it.
So if a whole lot of people came up, I could put a limit as to how long it would talk. But as, as long as it's just a few people, I think it's something.
But in, in his point tonight, I was really not sure whether the fire, by creating this fire mission, whether they would then have to financially oversee EMS, which is a, is a whole messy thing in and of itself. That if we would be requiring the fire commission to take on a financial process that they may or may not want to be responsible for. I mean, that I did not, I, I know you see as this conversation. But if I didn't get clarification, I would have had to ask for them to come back to clarify.
Well, but if it was gonna become an agenda item, then we would put it on the agenda. Then the public would then read the agenda and say, you know what? I'm interested in that and I'm gonna be there for that portion of the.
I think we're splitting hairs, but I do, I do think that we, because the question was asked, their minds were satisfied that we understood what the question was. And they went away with the question to answer themselves. So it may have shortcut an awful lot of discussion by putting them on the agenda and bringing a whole group of people in there. And they knew what that answer was. It was a very simple question of, does this mean this?
They would have maybe invited the fourth person to be here to have public comment based on what they just said. That, we just need to be really careful.
I agree. That I, I don't disagree with you there. I would, I remember.
Cause I'm sure I have a twin brother that would have loved to debate what they said in this room. That's fair. I'm, I'm just straight up.
Well, I, I hope that, that the whole brother and all that stuff has no effect on what we should be doing or not doing. I'll say that to start with. But secondly, I think all of our questions surrounded around the one item. And that one item was, what is the charge of this commission? And that's what I was trying to figure out that had to do with, everybody's going, what, what is it?
Go back and look at the ordinance.
Well, I know, I know. And I've read the ordinance and I've also read the proposed. And, and I think there's a lot of question that needs to be discussed regarding that fire commission.
Man, reject it just for the sake of time. When we get to that, we'll have a lot of discussion. Obviously I kept my part back. And the fire commission as an ad hoc versus permanent commission, all, what their charge is supposed to be. That's a very fluid date right now.
Exactly.
And we are, we, we are looking to make some major changes with it, which we'll discuss.
And that's why they came in tonight.
And that's why they came in tonight because.
That's what I'm realizing. They're not happy.
They're in a real bad spot here.
Yeah, they're not happy with what it is. We've been talking about it and, and I've been very transparent with that fire commission should go. So when we get to that, I can assure you.
Yeah, we need to hear that side.
You get all of it.
Yeah.
The insights and the history of it and all of it. Yeah.
That's great.
Something else? Someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, one favor, let's go.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Would you like to send me that?
Oh, you're red like a pumpkin. Here, there must be a pumpkin.
It's right. We must.